I'd like to, we're gonna start this school committee retreat, meeting of the whole here on April 10th, Saturday, April 10th. And we always start our meetings with a salute to the flag. If you'd all join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the free and fair government of America. Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. Since we're ready to get started, I will sit in so I can be seen by the aisle. I want to welcome all of you this morning to our tweet of all in school committee retreat on Saturday, April 10th, on this beautiful morning. This is Tom McGee. I'd like to say thank you for joining us at this open meeting of the local school committee. It is being conducted remotely, in person and remotely to comply with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in common because of the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19, we've been advised and directed to suspend public gathering. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order has been posted with an agenda for this meeting on the city website. This allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely or in person and remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the school committee meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless that participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the school apartment is convenient, in person, and by telephone conference via Zoom platform. It's posted on the city's website, the MOLN School, Public Schools website. Again, this meeting can also be viewed on cables free for podcast, channel 37, variety. This meeting is being recorded and attendees are participating. Some are viewing this. We are participating in person. Others can view this via Zoom and TV. We're going to translate the agenda, and it'll be really a round robin discussion led by the chairman, who will work with all of us, and it'll be much more informal discussion than it is more of a retreat. But it will be following the guidelines and the rules we typically have at committee meetings related to this year's running the meeting, but more important, all of us having a discussion together. So with that, I will begin the meeting. Thank you all for being here this morning. We need a roll call, or is there a bill? And we'd like a roll call to begin the meeting. Thank you.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Ford?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Nicholson?
Present.
Member Sadoway?
Present.
Mayor McGee?
Present.
And also for the record, we have Superintendent Tuttwiler, Deputy Superintendent Powers, Deputy Superintendent Rogero, School Business Administrator, Mr. McHugh, Secretary of the School Committee, Jules, and Attorney John Miles.
Thank you. With that, we can begin the meeting. And first, I'm listed to review the operating protocol. Dorothy, you want to begin?
Sure, absolutely.
You can start to lead us into that discussion, please.
All right. Thank you. It's great to be here and see the ability a person after more than a year. So the first thing that we're discussing this morning is review of the operating protocols. Just a reminder of why it's important to have operating protocols and norms in place. There really is a set of ground rules that this committee put together itself. They weren't handed to you. You developed them yourselves as a way for you to be talking about how you work together and communicate together. And by having those operating protocols, we've sort of set the table and said, well, this is how we're gonna work together. And that facilitates being able to actually get the work done. You can use it as we're doing this morning periodically to sort of as a tool of self-evaluation. Are we following what we said we could do, would do, and could we do a better job? So that's really our purpose this morning. It's great to be back in person for some of the workshops and meetings and so forth, but we still, I still feel like I can't do all the exercises I usually do where I'm asking you to pair office, talk in pairs. Because you can't, you know, there's not rooms or availability to do that part apart. Or let's all go to a chart and put a post-it to send your posts together. So this is really gonna be more of a discussion. So what I thought we could do, and we did something like this the last time, we reviewed operating protocols, just sort of taking it section by section and looking for different elements in the section and think if we followed them. And we showed some examples of maybe where we have followed them. Remember, you guys did a great job of that last time. Or places where we may have gotten, or you may have gotten a little bit off track. And if there are places where you're getting off track, is it just a matter of paying a little bit more attention to the protocols or does something need to change in the protocols? And then in each section, is there anything that looks like it needs to be added or added? So the first section that you have with just a few bullets is support the educational welfare and well-being of all students. So we will make, we will make all students a priority. We believe students are best served by supporting the needs of families, staff, and all stakeholders. And we will set goals and define accountability for the committee superintendent and staff and students. So part of talking through a mask is when I get to start talking, then I get out of breath. So I'll pause, catch my breath, and just sort of open the floor for discussion or comments or thoughts that people have.
Michael? Thank you. Thank you, Dorothy. Obviously, the operating protocol of the district, and it's been, it's been great to have a living document available for the public to see how we're gonna operate as a school committee. When I look at number one, two things jump to mind. How are we doing, what are we doing to make sure all students are priority? How and what are we doing to rest, support the needs of our families, students, and stakeholders? Those two, I believe, we've gone through the allocation of the budget and the updates to the policy that we're currently making with U.S. Fair Government. I think that we're doing so in a diligent way, in a way to make things more equitable for students and families. And also doing it in a way that principals and educators also have the funds they need to make sure that our students are priority in our education. The last one, when we say we will set goals and define accountability for the committees, superintendent, staff, and students. I'm not so sure where we're at on that part. I know that we set goals and define accountability to the superintendent, but obviously, that's required by law. So I'm not sure if we want to maybe be a little bit more specific in that area so we can make sure that that's something that we're doing. The discussion.
Can I just, in terms of setting the goals and accountability, you have goals for the superintendent, but you also have a district strategy, correct? So that would be something that guiding the goals for others in terms of, so I guess I, you may be doing better than that, than you're thinking like specifically. If you're doing that in that area, if you're doing it, you can have your district strategy, then that is parlaying down to goals for staff, for the superintendent and staff. And presumably, that staff is setting goals for the students. So maybe a little bit further along than you were.
Thank you. Lorana, then, on the other one.
I can see what the superintendent takes accountability for. It's like, oh, it's me, it's me, it's me. But I don't know if the staff, like, I'm not sure if they're being held accountable. Like, a report went into DESI without our approval, a change, and the licensure was going through without our approval. And mandated by our laws, they'll be in that. And the people that put a poll, I know they go to Dr. Tuttwiler and some of the deputies, but that, that didn't happen. So that's where I think Michael was coming from. Is that right?
No, I think that where that falls in is probably in a different section where we talked about no surprises. What I was talking about with regards to the district is what we're doing to, you know, obviously, number one for reading. And it's obviously up there. So I just wanted to put out what we're doing to keep that up there. And that's why I mentioned the budget and the policy changes. But obviously, what you're saying, I think, has to do with the relations with one another. You got it?
Thank you. Yeah. I mean, just kind of reacting to the general section, I think that, you know, I'm glad that we have this word. I think it's right that we have those things on students as priority. I think that's absolutely right. Go on. I think that's something that we do. And, you know, the second one, I think that we really see, I think this is, I think it's, I think it's important to recognize the other groups, and I think it's something that we really see play out over the last year. And I think that's something that local schools, under Dr. Tuttwiler's leadership, you know, have prioritized. And I think you see that in the way that Dr. Tuttwiler has talked about the hierarchy of needs and thinking about what happened when we all were set home, how we set up the meals program, the social, emotional, mental health supports, trying to make sure that we are being a group and we are involved in that. We kind of, you know, we're in a group, and that's what we're, so I thought that was a nice example of how the best second priority in action and its importance.
I'm good. Michael mentioned, I think he mentioned the policy meeting, but Michael, are you done?
Right. So something that really stands out when we talk about, just go back, kind of echo what Member Nicholson mentioned, you know, student priorities. When the pandemic onset, we had to make adjustments. There were high-level pivots that we had to make without knowing, you know, what exactly the forecast looked like. Procedurally, there were so many just pauses that created such challenges and adversities for a district like one. Being an urban district, we have so many different workforce conditions, environmental conditions, and social, emotional conditions that really hinder us already. I felt that the way we were able to adjust was pretty solid. And it was a very important observation for myself as a school committee member, while I see leadership, people and staff, and just when we see students, these type of experiences exposes our most vulnerable students. And that's something that, when I look at this deal of educational welfare and well-being of students, I think about the kids at home who needed the schools and how we increased outreach, how we strategize to increase that and to support the staff that we needed too with the professional development adjustments. And we can see it in the curriculum and the investment. So I just think that was a very, that was very, very, I think that was very, very, very strong, and I appreciate that. There's also, there's a lot more work to do. I believe that the state, with federal, also our federal legislature, I think there's a lot more to come. And I know we talked about equity, but there really is that liberation. This district's been underfunded for many years. We've been neglected for many years. And many areas of public education have hurt the school. It's not new. And it's really something for me that really, it's my passion to advocate our most vulnerable underfunded districts, as we went through the Gateway City and all the initiatives that were born from that. It's very important to keep that focus and ensure that we continue to prioritize our most vulnerable students and our staff to support the infrastructure and what we have. As Member Sadoway mentioned, we have a live document with operating protocols. I can see. There's always adjustments to make, though. You know, every year is something, there's always critiques, there's always ways to get better. You know, and that's something that we all need to continue to wrap up and continue that routine to avoid complacency. But thank you. Continue on.
Michael?
And just to follow up with what Member Capola said, you know, a lot of things we were forced to go into because of COVID are beneficial to the district. The fact that every student has a laptop or the teacher has a laptop. There are many things that we're gonna be able to do with the unions and with the stakeholders to better the experience of our students. You know, at the beginning of the school year, it's hectic. We may be able to even use the technology we have now to improve the transition, where the teachers might have, you know, a couple weeks ahead for their in-person to meet the students on Zoom, to see, you know, to see their needs and expectations and whatnot. Because this technology's not gonna go away. And I like that, just on Thursday, we again made an equitable move to transfer large sums of money to continue our advancement in the technology. And Mr. McHugh said that we're gonna be an example for other urban districts on these technological advances, which is a good thing. So I think, Member Capola, it hit me on the head when he said, it's the educational welfare and well-being. That's a pretty broad statement, because that's how important schools are and all of our kids are.
True. Go on.
I think what a number of you said about the COVID being an advantage to us is probably the only good thing that came out, is that we're talking about interacting and making sure that what, you know, our students needed, our families needed, our staff needed. You know, we saw the good part of what happened in our system and we saw the needs that we really needed. So I think that was a plus that, you know, maybe, you know, we always, we always talked about the students first, but this past year gave us that opportunity to talk about the second one, which involves, you know, a group. And I think it was a plus for us to know what we were doing good and what we weren't doing good and where families' needs were, you know. And I think that we were more involved with families. I think the staff would probably say the same thing. They got a better chance to know the families. So it was a plus. And I think that part, we did a good job.
I'd just like to follow up on that. I mean, obviously, this challenge has been unprecedented. And, you know, as we identify these protocols, you know, in really a challenging time, all of us came together to really take on that challenge head-on. And I think even before that, and was done to see the results of it, because Ronnie talked about the funding, we as a group worked closely with the administration and advocating strongly with the legislature to pass the Student Opportunity Act. So we really understand that we can make a difference. And I want to, you know, so we're talking about, you know, stepping up and making those commitments well within a pandemic, but even before that point. And the good news that we heard this week is that the Student Opportunity Act is now gonna be funded and, you know, moving forward initiative budget. But that didn't happen in a vacuum. And we sent letters of support. It was, you know, it was testified, the legislation, we worked with other mayors and other school committees. So I think both in pre-pandemic, in pandemic times, you know, meeting those challenges and meeting this protocol, I think, was something we all really worked hard to find a way through.
So then, just to wrap up this section, you're not seeing any changes already? Any committing to change in this section?
Um, just Michael. Sorry. One thing that I thought that Number Ford brought up was that this line too was very important during the, during the past year. But I believe what we did differently is not only were we supporting it, but we were also getting end-pointed feedback from families, staff, and stakeholders. And I think that that should be something that goes forward. So I don't know where to change that order by supporting the needs of families and the needs of, working collectively with families, staff, and all stakeholders, or something like that. And I thought that was a benefit that was very much needed in, during this session. I think it should continue.
I think you're right, also. I think you're right that, you know, we gave them a voice, you know, in particular, families that, you know, were at a frustrated state for them. And they felt that they could freely open up, you know, whether it was to the teachers, you know, to administrators, and to us. I mean, we know what we got in telephone calls. I mean, that was, that was daily, you know, frustration on many families' parts. But I feel like they, during this, feel as though they can reach out and speak to, you know, their teachers honestly, you know, their child's teachers, you know, and freely to call us, you know, in frustration. So I think, I think that is a good thing that they felt open about that.
Dorothy, I want to comment on that, or?
Well, I was just gonna say, I, I, I think there's two ways to look at it. I think that what you're saying is that you, in order to support the needs, which you feel like you did, you have to know what the needs were. So that's sort of already incorporated in it. Or you could explicitly add whichever the rule of the committee would be.
And like Dorothy said, not only were there phone calls, there were Facebook groups that were created, support groups, because we were all together, people that never spoke to each other, to each other. Like, it was amazing. Like, when you have kids in, I'm a mom there. When you have, when there are kids in the house, you go outside the comfort zone. And that's what we saw over and over again. And we had, we had lots of pickups, because it was all to us, you know. And we made fractions, you know, not enough laptops, there's a quick spot, a lot of, how many times did it reach out to you that you leave an message to IT, you got more IT people? So, you know, we thought through it, but I, if I wasn't expecting my daughter had it, she'd go on top. So I was already expanding it, but if I wasn't, I was gonna hear from somebody else. And I think that that's, I think that it's only good for the community to know that their input's important. And I don't think that just reading that, you get that feeling.
Dorothy, what, so I think there may be a consensus here to try and include our test the language that specifically identifies, but the input is included for us to, you know, meet the second bullet under this protocol. I don't know how that would work or what would make sense. I think we did, as I said, did work through that. I think maybe explicitly identifying that in terms of, seems like, I don't know what other people think, that's what we talked about.
I mean, it could be something like, we believe students are best served by seeking input on and supporting the needs of.
Go ahead.
Just a quick thought on an edit.
I'm just wondering if under two, if you go by third bullet from the bottom, instead of refer constituents' concerns, say, not encourage, but.
Where are you?
The third bullet from the bottom and the second.
Okay.
You know, where it says constituent concerns and complaints, but, you know, put something before constituent, but put refer maybe in front of complaints. Welcome constituent concern and refer complaints to the appropriate person within the district chain of communication. And welcome sounds better than, you know, to me.
Yeah, that's all of those, negative, like referred.
Yeah. It just seems like welcome constituent concern. I mean, that's a spot that I see, you know, that maybe could just have a little tweaking. That's just my opinion. If somebody read it and saw the word welcome or whatever word people think is another word.
Maybe just welcome and refer?
Yeah.
That seems more, it's like a conservative issue, complaints, not necessarily anything positive.
Anything, right. Exactly.
Fractured, you know, fractured.
I don't know. I would very agree with Member Capola, because, you know, when we, when we look at just operational factors, language is very important. And to take that, you know, we can take great feedback all you want, but it's always really important to answer that. You know, you want to hit the challenge, you want to, you want to have a space that welcomes that. And for it to, we don't know if something's wrong, we continue to keep doing the wrong thing. And we don't know how we're gonna fix it. So I think that's a great, I definitely, I really appreciate that suggestion. And I appreciate you putting that out, because it is true. When you have constituents reach out, they don't want us to disclose who they are, they're nervous. They're nervous, they feel like they're not, that they're doing something wrong. But really, we want to be able to embrace that feedback in order to improve operations. So I definitely appreciate that. That's a good point.
Just a thought, the language, we students are best served by continued discovery and support of the needs of family. In other words, that's our goal, we should be working towards that. But just another, I mean, I know what we're, we're missing here, but.
I like that. I think that gets it.
I like, yeah. I think it's better than what I was.
So it would be, we believe, again, it's in the first section, second bullet. We believe students are best served by continued discovery and support of the needs of families, staff, and all stakeholders. Again, this is the protocol and a goal, obviously, just again.
Which doesn't, which doesn't preclude add, add welcome to the other.
No, not at all.
So that's, so it's just, and it's good to say a member of the committee wants to read the document. You gotta, to have, you know, make sure that it's legible in a way where it's labeled. You have people from the community who actually can process this and understand this. And if you want to have a document that has that access. Some folks might not understand certain sentences in terms of, you know, how we would. But it depends on, we want to make sure that it's equitable. And sometimes, I see documents sometimes that have so much just over, over-vocabularyized language in it. And it's very confusing. We want to make sure this is, this is a very universal document, that folks, all of them, and make sure that this is rolled out in all languages, so it's an inclusive document. And that's definitely, as we proceed, every sentence, every sentence doesn't matter. So maybe one sentence. How many folks, you know, if you're on the fly and you're frustrated, you're trying to figure out, you know, why am I coming to get this document in the first place? We don't know why. Maybe, you know, whether they come in here with frustration, they're coming in to a war. Whatever the case is, I think the framework, it does, it does show. We do, and I think we do as well, obviously, at the high level. Maybe we put a lot of work into this, but just to keep that in mind.
Michael?
One of the things that we did, Member Capola, is when this was uploaded, it reached out to Patrick and he made it available on the website, so when you translate it to the website, the words of this document will all stand. You have the PDF version that's in English and signed by us. But on the website, it's in Word format, you know, and the airport is to translate it. But there are words in here that everything's on, but I think are, and I own those with the tissue. You know, there's, there's certain words here that might need to be clarified a little bit. But I agree with the airport, our pattern, that word to the sentence, and I think it's important.
Dorothy, you want to go on? We're wrapped.
Ready to move on to the next section, then? So uh, before we like delve into this, I think that, you know, you were talking a lot about COVID and the sort of the, some positive things that came out of it, how you were able to work together to make sure the entire community and your entire student body was served. But I think it's also important to acknowledge there were a ton of challenges, right? And of, of, much of the challenge in groups that were used to getting together, working together in a certain way, this was a whole new level of work that you all needed to do. And it strained communication and it strained relationships. You weren't all of a sudden getting together in person every other week. Uh, you were meeting over Zoom, that the channels of communication kind of changed. And quite honestly, I don't think the state helped very much. I felt like through this year, we managed to find every single last gray area that could possibly exist in looking at roles and responsibilities of the superintendent and the school committee. The phone calls I was getting was like, oh, another gray area we found. Who ever thought we'd be talking about who decided whether you play basketball or not, right? Was that the school superintendent or the school committee's responsibility? So in, in terms of um, sort of that roles and responsibility and communication, I think there are a lot of committees where things changed during the course of the year, maybe not um, maybe not for the best. And that as we get back to what hopefully is the more normal, that it's important to sort of look at, where did we maybe get a little bit off track, that we need to get back on track? So just some, sort of something to keep in mind, um, as you're looking through sort of the communication and operation and or how do we work as a rather part of the focus. So um, the second section that you have, um, is dedicate ourselves to establishing and maintaining effective communication. I'll just read through it really quickly. Um, set the tone for the entire system and make every effort to convey an honest assessment and create a positive image for our school system. Have a clear understanding of the roles and responsibilities of the school committee and the superintendent. Channel requests for information, reports, and data through the secretary, superintendent, and board chair rather than directly staff. The superintendent will ensure that each member has equal access to this information at the time of the matter. Recognize the importance of proactive communication and agree that there will be no surprises. If committee members have questions or concerns, they agree to contact the superintendent and for topics to be discussed at the meeting well in advance of the meeting. Maintain the confidentiality of privileged information and respect the open meeting law. Refer constituent concerns and complaints to the appropriate person within the district chain of communication. Um, recognize the importance of working collaboratively with city officials to improve our schools and ask and we seek ways to enlist their support for our efforts. Uh, recognize the importance of honoring our norms and beliefs and agree to take responsibility for respectfully reminding one another when we get on track. Obviously, the long section is a little bit too explicit.
Right, well, I thought we might have, Michael, we did have a conversation on my end, I think with, with, like number Capola mentioned about the welcome um, piece on the third bullet from the bottom, which was section two. I think adding that later would be pretty, pretty good, so. I don't know how to form that, I don't know. I'm not Capola, for sure.
So would you, um, if I sort of remembered what you said, welcome constituent concerns and complaints and refer to, refer them to the appropriate per- person?
I didn't, I think, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
But I think Michael also mentioned, you know, the word constituent. You know, a lot of um, people might, well, are reading that, may not understand what was saying constituent, you know, so.
So, go ahead now. Jerry and Michael, did you have a comment on that? Well, Jerry?
Yeah, I'm just surprised, you, you, any, any community concerns you wanted to change constituent? I mean, I like the welcome.
I like the welcome word, but I don't know, there's another word constituent that people who would pick it up would understand that they're part of that, awesome, you know. Constituent means everybody in the city, but, you know, is there another word for everybody in the city, whether it's a, you know, whether it's a, a family or business or whatever. You know, yeah, all of those.
We can stay consistent, because we use family, staff, and all stakeholders before. We could say, we could use that there as well. Just to stay consistent with the role of the document, because we aren't going back and forth with what, what we're saying.
Yeah.
Um, I've been on, go ahead, uh, Michael, you want to, Jerry, on that class, then we'll go to John.
Um, I, I do wanna say that um, obviously, you know, we're seeking openly and honestly for um, in the operating protocols, um, I just wanna make sure that um, you know, the number one goal from here is will we set the tone for the entire system and make every effort to convey an honest assessment and create a positive image for our school system? That's gonna work, I believe, for all the channels, not just with the school committee, but also with the superintendent. Um, so I, I think that this is an area that we definitely need um, uh, to, to, to be dealt with because of, you know, obviously um, the DSL, um, situation that we had that members um, um, greatly brought up, um, where um, you know, there was uh, an assessment done or um, or reviewed on by the, by DESI on our, our field students. And we only got the information after the fact. So um, you know, we weren't able to, to work in collaboration with the district to make sure that we're condemning honest assessment of all of the student needs um, in, 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 in unison, create um, some sort of uh, a resolution uh, to make, to show that it's a positive outcome for our students. So um, I, I'd like to maybe work on that a little bit, just to clarify um, that. Um, I agree with number um, uh, Capola on the, the word change, the sheet, uh, the fact that uh, further down, but I think that the, the top one is, is setting the tone. That, that's too important, and I know that our district strategy does that. Will we um, work in unison with the, the, where, you know, we set high standards, you know? There's the plethora of, of, of things that the district has set for, for strategic wise. But I, I just maybe like to, to see, maybe we'll be working on that.
John?
Yeah, I, I think um, we keep that using family, staff, and stakeholders. And I think we all became aware of how dependent these people are upon us uh, more than we realize that they realize. I think it's very important to make this as simple to, for everybody to understand. And certainly, we all understand that, that when we signed this on ten twenty-six nineteen, it was a vastly different world than we live in now. And it was also showed that it, it gave us an opportunity to become better. And I just think it's that we should, we should, we, we forward, should endeavor to make everything as simple and as understandable as we can, because there's people out there that don't think they really ever realized how dependent they were upon us. We knew they were there, we always mentioned family, staff, and stakeholders, but I think each of us is seeing with the number of phone calls, emails, and it is that, that, you know, we're important in their life, so, you know, I think it's important that we communicate to them.
And I, so, thanks. First, uh, I just took down uh, the PowerPoint, because apparently um, uh, it wasn't able to be viewed or stuck on the first slide for those who are viewing. Um, but I think the substance of the conversation is more important than say, the slide, so I'm sorry to say.
Um, uh, I agree with uh, member Saddlewhite about his comments relative, relative to uh, the first bullet. Um, I, I would say, I, I think I consistently convey an honest assessment of what's going on in the district, whether it's fantastic or not so great. Uh, and I do the same with the school committee. I feel like, you know, the substance of what you're saying is really more closely aligned with the next bullet, uh, which is having a clear understanding of roles and responsibilities between the committee and the superintendent. Uh, I've not been in a school committee meeting in this district or anywhere where coordinated program reviews have brought the school committee for their approval. Uh, and so I, I really defer to you uh, on whether or not that is supposed to happen. It has not happened here. So I didn't think I was behaving in a way outside of what is traditionally done. Uh, I did inform the school committee that there was going to be a piece of it um, that, you know, could be controversial around the licenses in our two-by-two meetings. And so that was my attempt to make sure that in advance of something that could have been seen as um, you know, controversial, the school committee had a sense for what was going on. I have no problem, I mean, that document, the, our uh, uh, response to the coordinated program review for English learning education, um, there's nothing to hide in. I mean, everything in there is our plans to address the areas where we were cited on. Uh, those align uh, pretty closely with our strategic plan, uh, with our efforts, with our yearly goals around meeting the needs of English learners. Um, so I, I just wanna be clear, I, I didn't think that there was anything sneaky or underhanded uh, around that. And I also didn't think that that was the role or responsibility of the school committee to approve those uh, plans. Uh, they're developed by, by experts in the field, our own experts, it was approved by DESI. Uh, and so I didn't know that it also needed school committee approval.
I, I would agree with your assessment that it's, you know, that, that DESI does the coordinated program review as the findings you need to respond. Uh, I not think school committees, uh, uh, you know, vote to approve the response.
But, the, I, the, I just wanna hold it. Mike, who else, and then Ryan? Um, I, I wasn't saying that you were dishonest or your assessment wasn't proper. Obviously, your assessment was based on data. What the issue was, was that the data that was being collected years before was, 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 was not, not a hundred percent accurate. That, we, we weren't counting all of the DL's uh, uh, students. That's the, that was the issue. You don't count those, they don't get the services. And so that's ineptly. So we, we decided to count them, then we needed to provide them the services. Correct, when we counted the real number, we didn't have enough to provide the services to them. So you came to us with a solution. So, and that, that's what I'm saying, you know, the honest assessment is, hey, we messed up. And, 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 and we need to fix it. But, but that, that's, that's the information I think that uh, should have been conveyed. Like, hey, you know, there's gonna be, um, you know, we, we've already corrected the situation. We're moving forward with the new book, you know, separating the, the, the position for the book. We're doing all these things to correct this situation, although it doesn't happen again. But this is, this, this math, okay? Uh, what we got was, um, the, the two right groups is great, you know, we, we got some advanced, advanced notice, but the, the assessment started to take place in twenty nineteen through twenty twenty. The uh, plan was submitted and approved in twenty twenty-one, and then I think we met right after. So there was a, a, you know, a large uh, gap between the two. And I think that um, we have no problems with communicating with each other. I can call you, you can call me, and, and, and I don't think that there's, there's any issues. But things like this is, I think, is important, especially when it results into a huge system-wide change. And, and um, you might think that it falls outside of the, 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 the curriculum, but I think that you have a school committee that cares, you have educators, you have parents, you have, you know, a, a, a school committee that's, that wants that to be informed. And I think that we say that over and over again, especially with curriculum and books, and that's natural. So um, again, I'm not saying that your approach was, was wrong. What I'm saying, um, uh, the data collection was the issue, which caused obviously the, the lack of service for these students. And now today, we still are, are working on a solution, because obviously, the school committee didn't um, move forward with the approval of your request to change. So I think it just could have been, could have been handled a, a little bit differently. And, and again, we do have a role and responsibilities, and I appreciate that. I know member Ford says it all the time, this is his team, this is, it is district. We're here um, uh, uh, for the policies and to, to back them up and keep reminding the guys come back.
Ryan?
I just like to bring back to turning my host on, on whether or not this school committee should have been approached on this issue. I, I would like you to explain the um, justification of the school committee to be um, aware of the changes that went through with DESI report and the DESI, um, the report that was sent to DESI prior to even us knowing what's going on. Well, why, excuse me, I don't wanna say that exactly, Drew, that's incorrect. The five minutes that Mr. Ford and I had talking about this issue.
I know, I did, I know that really began with the jurisdiction school committee through all of what was created to be a national change in qualifications relative to a, to, to that. Moving with the larger burden on them, this power is the government's, would be the problem of certification. And it's a certification fight. So they had to certification, even the court of the, the Allen School Department. So many of them, who, who had, they were formed, that the city, the unit, they called it changing qualifications. And that is uh, post-actuarily, through the governments of the, the administration. And this is the uh, judicial authority over there, which we can help them to go. School committee, if, if I may, I just, just quickly, no problem. Um, but the past practice in this district has not been that. I mean, two years ago, we, we moved to require uh, pre-K teachers to have a special license. It did not come before the school committee. You know, I do not, again, many, many uh, school committee meetings that I've attended over the past six years, that has not been brought forward to the school committee for their approval. And so uh, I think I would say, my bad, you know, going forward, I'll absolutely do that. But that's not how the school, that's not how the regular things have formed in this district in the past. Uh, returning my host. And I wanna say this, so far as what the superintendent stated, which was brought to my attention, I would assume that he agreed with me, so I'd be, when I presented him, he agreed with me that we would link your school to your authority and put it down in the school committee approval. But then he acted totally with a, 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 a attempt, with a attempt to circumvent. The authority is spooky, that's what's being improved. He acted properly, with policy, as he thought he had the right to do. And he doesn't mention the authority of school powers. So in response to DESI, it would be proven, as a superintendent.
Sorry, man, I got you. I, yes. No, no, I'm good, no, I'm good. Any other discussion on this uh, issue? Ryan?
And uh, so with all that being said, um, I believe the leadership was wrong. We have an obligation, a duty to respond to the needs of this district, to the students, to the families. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a very important, uh, we have to collaborate and we have to resolve high contentious issues, uh, whether you're on one side or the other. You need to collaborate and come together. Um, it is imperative that we just make these decisions on good faith and informed practices. Uh, believe data-driven, um, informed practices. Been something that I've seen over the years with the district and the leadership and um, it's, you know, when, when folks, when we look at the, the decisions that we make, uh, we do need to recognize that we, we, we do have, uh, we, we have controversy, you know, that could happen. Um, but I operate in a solution-oriented frame of mind. Um, I, 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 I wholeheartedly, I wholeheartedly know that everyone in this room here is, well, the students, the families, and the, and the teachers, and everyone in this, in this district. Um, the passion is there, and it's just important that, you know, in term, in terms of just the entire system, when I look at this document, now, these are words, uh, but actions are very important. And how we move forward through these experiences and to recognize the, the, the level of trauma that we went through with public service is very, is real. Um, we were on call, um, and all, as a school committee member, a member of the, of. Um, we were on call, um, and all, as a school committee member, member of the board mentioned, when that happened, my phone never stopped. I was reaching out to constituents around 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM. I'm, I was moving that I've never in my life, I would be, I would be plugged in the way I was plugged in, um, and it's been an honor, and it's been, it's been, it's been a privilege. Um, I think right now, I think the purpose of the retreat also is to get grounded and to position ourselves, to put ourselves in a position to pivot in the right direction to grow from this, no matter what. To hash out differences, to move forward with leadership, and that, and that is what leadership is. It's about recognizing these challenges, picking apart what we can do better, and how we can improve also the students that we serve, and that's why I believe a lot of us are here, for these students of, of this district, and that's why we're here. So I think it's good to have these conversations, to form a half critical dialogue. So that's not just how you go and shaking hands and all that, since this is real, this is really in the young people's lives. The decisions that we make every day are impacting the longevity of this district. Um, and when I see my signature on the document, this is gonna be here for a little bit longer than, than, uh, a few years, so. But then you.
Um, so just after our dialogue, which is great, um, I, I think that we can tweak the, the first one, um, to, um, this didn't talk about rotation experience, but I think that, um, that we set the tone for the entire student system, we can make every effort to convey an honest assessment of need, um, to create a positive experience or environment actually. I think that that, um, uh, it, 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 it added, I think, improved that. Um, uh, obviously, uh, like I said, and Dr. Pappalotti agreed, um, as we had the accurate E L numbers, obviously, we would have been able to create a positive experience or environment for those kids that needed for services. And but that can play into a lot of different, uh, things that, that, that this district has had for needs. So I can say it again for the committee, set the tone for the entire school system. The reason why I put school system because we need all the decisions to come at the end of the sentence to keep that moving. And make every effort to convey an honest assessment of need to create a positive, uh, image part, I don't, it just seems like it's, it's, there's no substance when you think of image, because that's why I wanted to say there's experience or environment in our school system. Um.
Any thoughts on that? Do you want to?
I was just, yeah, um, another word might be culture.
Yes, I like that.
Whether you have to say culture instead of image or environment or all three.
I'd like to put environment for our school, because culture we can add, but environment wouldn't be, um, laden friendly, but if a person was reading this document, they could see that, you know, I want positive environment in our school, I don't think they walk around and say the culture of our school, not usually, they don't know that. Not everyone knows it, so I think the environment is. And culture, I need something to stop.
Yeah, I don't think it's a stop too. Other thoughts? Because of that language, is there a reasonable change? Do we want to keep culture in our district environment, and do we want to realize what it sounds like, so we're?
Set the tone for that. I set the tone for the entire school system, to make every effort to convey an honest assessment of need to create a positive environment and culture in our school. You want culture?
I, I, I think it's fine. I think, I think we have both of those. You got it? Do you want to?
Can I just say, listening to the discussion that you had from an outside viewpoint and reading these, I feel like you threw that issue, and, you know, through, um, what attorney Myhouse said, that you ran into a bump, and you discussed it, and you solved it, and are ready to move on in a more positive way. So while it sounds like there was some frustration, it sounds like that resolution, that you, you worked through it, and the resolution was that you lived up to what your, um, what your operating group said.
Just to follow up on this, because it's from the second, roles and responsibility. So the attorney Myhouse, Myhouse identified something that has not been cleared at all up to this issue. I think it's, it's specific where there's certain requirements that the school committee act, or the responsibility act, it's important that the superintendent not know that prior to an issue being raised. I, I think, you know, Dr. Pappalotti clearly identified for six years that was not the case, now, now we understand the certain circumstances, I think that's important to clarify that so it's clear for all of us, as well, superintendent to understand that, you know, and it's a certain specific, uh, piece of, uh, of it all. But it's, it's pretty, pretty, pretty narrow and specific piece. Very, it's not a, it's not a, it's not broad ranging, but it does directly affect the issues that we've all talked about. So I just make, I don't actually know what the best way to address the, you know, I guess it's the second bullet, um, this issue that, as you say, it has been, you know, I think we have a really good discussion nearby.
Well, and I think, you know, that there are, there are times, obviously, when things are clear, and there's lots of times when it's not clear. And I think, so when it's not clear, have the discussion of how will, how will this group, how will this team handle the things that aren't clear in a way that makes everybody feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, I think maybe one way to, uh, get at that conversation, having about the second bullet is, you know, have implies it, you've been at once, you have, right, that, that, that stat. Um, maybe we want to say, you know, because as you mentioned, this precedent, when new issues come up, sometimes it's not clear, right? Um, so maybe there's a way to make that more dynamic, um, by, you know, saying, create, I'm not, I'm unclear, I understand, like work to maintain, and something like that, that if new issues come up, just remind us that, okay, something new's come up, let's, let's think about what our roles and responsibilities are. Um, because it's not, you know, new things come up, and, and there's a lot of gray areas, you know?
Oh, you're thinking, I actually wrote down, uh, the term that's, have, uh, an ongoing knowledge of and a clear understanding of the rules and responsibilities of this school committee and the superintendent, because it's ongoing. And, and, um, it's, it's just like, uh, you know, nurses and some attorney could need C L Es or, you know, to be, uh, education to be. I, I think that, uh, if we, if we switch up the language, maybe, um, have, uh, an ongoing knowledge and a clear understanding of the rules and responsibilities of the school committee and the superintendent, um, it's, it's simplified, and I think it, it shows that, um, it's a continuous thing. I know that, um, when we, we go out and, when you go out and we had Tom as the secretary of school committee, and he used to give us, you know, updated, uh, books and whatnot, and I, you know, Mary's still doing that, but, um, it's important to have to know. And I, in the mail, we get a bunch of stuff from M A C, with, with updates and whatnot, so it's important to know and to have that ongoing knowledge. So I think that that would be a, a, a good update to that, a, a, as a mayor and superintendent.
Any other thoughts on that, Ryan?
And, and I think that's why it's important that we have, um, attorney Myhouse, that we can reach out to him, because, you know, we get, we get things, I mean, you could, you could read the policy manual, you could read the Mass General laws, and sometimes it's just not clear to us, and that's why we have attorney Myhouse, to reach out to him and stuff like that, you know? And as far as the, you know, the pre-K situation, I mean, I think, unless somebody kind of brings it to us as an issue, and, you know, it just made sense to have, um, you know, teachers, you know, special ed, because, you know, almost all the kids in our pre-K, especially this year, you know, all of the kids that are in our pre-K are on ed plans, you know, so we, you know, that was kind of like, maybe that, that went biased without us really knowing. But I think for me personally, I always need to reach out to attorney Myhouse and lay it on him and accept what he says. It just makes it clear for me, and we have them, we pay them, I won't say your name.
Yes, Michael. Uh, the next one, um, will we go with the language that, could you, if you want to read it again, I'll make sure that we're, uh, have an ongoing knowledge and a clear understanding of the roles and responsibilities of this school committee and the superintendent. For the census, I think that's good.
I think it's good.
Uh, and then the, the next one that I, I'd like, um, the, the topic had, uh, it's the bullet, where it is recognize importance of right to communication and agree that there will be no surprise. If committee members have questions or concerns, they agree to contact superintendent for topics to be discussed, if needed, well in advance, if we have that meeting. I think that if we leave that, it's more so a surprise by us, um, in multiple ways. Um, and what I'd like to add is, if, um, um, you know, one of the things that, that Dr. Pappalotti has done is that if something is coming up that, um, he got additional information on, and he tried to pull it in, he would reach out to us, or as well reach out to us, if it was located, if he needed to have that. I'd love to have that somewhere documented, so like if there's, um, not advanced notice, um, uh, or if there's not an improvement in the authority, um, then, you know, we can, uh, it would be held up to the next meeting or something like that. Does that make sense to, 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 to? Um, if I'm in there, um, so I, I, I always read this bullet as being superintendent's case, not necessarily committee case, in, in terms of there being no surprises, I mean, if I know something, or something's coming down the pipe that I, you know, am beautiful around, uh, alerting me to that, um, it sounds to me like you're saying, um, if there are, if there's new information on an agenda I own, and there's not sufficient time for you to, you know, to process that information before the meeting, then it could prove gone. So, I mean, I, sure, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
I, I, I just want to make a quick comment. I think sometimes you may not need to know that information, meaning you have to adapt on it, but there might be information you need to learn, something came up today, I, I need to speak to this, because, you know, this has been great from the day that we set schools were being closed on March 12th last year. I mean, every day was a new sort of life perspective, all of us went through it. Every day new information was coming out, the state said, today we find out at 9:00 AM, today there's a new phase. We would have to figure out on our own, to be honest with you, what did that mean in length? What were we gonna do? How were we gonna tell the businesses? So it really is some, I think this pandemic really identified, like, I used to say, the wild day today, but sometimes the wilding by the hour. So I, I don't, I, I don't disagree that we want to be, information on a plane, we have to make decisions immediately, but I think it would be something that we need to know that information now, and then give us a chance over the next week to, to have, oh, we got a lot of, we have meetings weekly sometime, and let's have a meeting next week to deal with this issue that has come up, so. So that's just, my point is, there might be information either from our end or from the administration then, that we need to know at a meeting, at least just to know, not to act on, but to know that this just, you know, three hours ago, something came up that we should be thinking about. So I, I don't know how we worked that into this discussion, I didn't make a corrupt thought, you know?
No, that's, that's, that's fine, I actually, I, I look at the no surprises in both ways, right? That if, if a committee member is gonna come in with a viewpoint about an issue that you don't expect, that they would let you know ahead of time. Um, or, but I also think that, um, that in looking at the protocols, they, and, you know how we always talk about policies for the broad, don't let your protocols tie you too much to the rules to know, but broad, more broadly, the committee always has the option to say, we're not ready to vote at a meeting, without putting it in the protocol, that's part of Robert's rules, as you can just say, you know, we're not ready to take action on this. So, you know, while there are, while there are issues that you may have experienced in the past year, and you look at the protocols and say, I wonder if we could use a protocol to solve that issue, if the protocol broadly solves it, or there's another solution, I don't think we need to clearly alter the protocols every time, because that makes sense.
What I was trying, trying to get at was, yes, what?
I agree with you, God, I saw this as both ways, no surprise. So I really, I, I think, I certainly see that only just one way, no surprise, I didn't vote it.
I always, I always, I always have to be right, is what I'm saying. Um, and I think that we owe it to, to the public, obviously, to, to have no surprises. Well, if people want to be involved in our meetings, if things run up last minute and it's not on the agenda, or if things are changing, how is the public knowledge they should, uh, participate in, and if it's impacting no one's kids? So that, that's what, what I think of, and I think that's why it's important to have no surprises, obviously, it's, it's important, correct, to be able to, to, to join and a, an official relationship, but we also have, uh, uh, 17,000 students with parents and guardians that also want to have information, uh, ahead of time, uh, to be able to participate if, if need be. So that's, that's what I think of, when I think of no surprises. It, um, adding that language, uh, uh, obviously, we see in our policy meetings, uh, how, you know, language is important. Um, this is not a policy in operating for a moment. So, um, you know, I, I know that if, if, uh, if, uh, there's not a majority to, to, to move forward on certain things, but I think that Dr. Pappalotti is aware of that as well. So if we don't need that language, I'm fine with it.
Any, any other thoughts on, on that? Both the language that we're talking about, or just reiterating what you already did on?
Just, um, you know, when it gets into timely, you know, like, you know, this year's an unusual year, but there'll be new s- school committee members in the future, you know, and they'll be new to it, and, you know, they'll really need that extra time. Sometimes we buy things, you know, the afternoon of a meeting or something, you don't have time to digest it, because we all have other things that are going on too, you know, or if you want to pick up the phone and, you know, ask, um, you know, that question, sometimes it's, it's not, you know, I, one day last week, only Thursday, I picked up the phone, but the administration was already closed, and it wasn't, you know, the normal time, so it was like tracking jaw down, tracking hair down. And, uh, so just meeting timely, timely, you know, should be, I don't think we should have to write it in there, but timely should be at least, you know, like 48 hours or something to give us new information to digest, I think that's all I.
Okay, man? Excuse me. I think, um, that would be great if we say, recognize the importance of timely, proactive communication and agree to do the no surprises. That look that word? Yeah? Any thoughts on that? Read it back a little?
Can you repeat that, Michael, because I can.
Recognize the importance of timely, proactive communication and agree to do the no surprises. That work for everyone?
Just, um, just, yeah, just before we move on, the, um, did we settle the, the third bullet from the bottom above them, wording? Talked about it the other second, I'm not sure we got it.
I think we have, but let's, let's review that and just get the language down, so we don't have to.
I thought, I thought the, um, it kind of, throughout, maybe it was agreeable to say, welcome family, staff, and stakeholders, instead of, uh, referring constituent concerns. Just, uh, change those first two words to say, welcome family, staff, and stakeholders concerns. Is that something that?
Because it won't be a dialogue, that seems to, it does agree on that.
And then did, what, did it continue on to, and refer down to the appropriate person?
It did, it did, nothing else changed past those first two words, yes.
But that's the language, we have, that language is clear, right?
Yes. Ready to move on to the last section? I don't think we need to put our point up.
No.
To, to, uh, so, um, so the last section, demonstrate professional and collegial relations with one another, maintain transparency, trust, and mutual respect between and among committee members, the superintendent, and the administration, by treating everyone with dignity and respect, even in times of disagreement. Base decisions on our stated goals, vote our convictions, avoid bias, and uphold and support the decisions of the majority of the committee once a decision is made. Recognize that the authority rests only with majority decisions of the committee and make no independent commitments or take any independent actions that may compromise the committee as a whole. Agree that our positions will not be used for personal and partisan. Agree that our positions will not be used for personal and partisan gain. Acknowledge that the committee meeting is a business meeting held in public, not a public meeting. We will make every effort to ensure that meetings are effective and efficient. Respect the leadership roles of the committee chair and the superintendent.
Any discussion, Michael? Thank you. I think that we have a clear example, just again, with the E.L., where the majority spoke and superintendent respected that, as well as the people on the other side of the vote. But I think that we're working in this, in this way at this point, and especially during COVID with this move issues and everything else, I think that the, the relations with one another have benefited as well. I think I speak more often to my colleagues, because we're out on our own and want to help them also, and therefore, I don't see anything that I can think of that would jump out that we can change. Anybody else?
I, I think it was pretty clear. I mean, they said it was pretty clear, and I think, well, reflect. My perspective, coming off of the unconscious, I think that's a little bit.
I want to say quickly, on that first one, does it contain transparency? I think it's something that, and I think in fact, as in the past, I think it's something that we've gotten better as a district about feeling comfortable sharing when, when things aren't going where we want them to, when it's a problem. And I think that, I think that's really important, and I think that inspires trust for people, because people, themselves, it's a feeling when things aren't going well, and to see that acknowledged by the leadership and knowing that, that that's before and that we're working on, I think, is one of the things that has helped us get through this, this year, you know, if we had piles on technology issues or, you know, case shares like that. And so, I think that's, I think that's positive there.
Any other discussion? Or someone else?
Yeah, just two things, Mr. Mayor. The second from the bottom, you know, as we took our meetings to a virtual environment, you know, we never really had, like, a professional development or a conversation about how we are going to be in that environment, we just went to it because we had to. And, you know, for, I've noticed some challenges or maybe some departures from that, you know, meeting is a, committee meeting is a business meeting held in public, not a public meeting, particularly when the chat is open or the question, the Q and A features are open, the people are saying things. Sometimes there's responses to those. I see that as much akin to, you know, if we were all in person and there was people seated in the audience and they shouted out a question, the committee's responding. I just think it's really just kind of getting on the same page around how that feels to me like a departure from, from this, uh, from the language here. And that includes channeling text messages and Facebook messages that we're getting during the meeting into the meeting. Uh, you know, I, I would just say dangerous territory. If you look at what happened in Boston with that school committee member who said something really nasty, and then two weeks later, all the committee members' text messages end up in the glow because it's, it's voidable like this is today. So, I, I would just say that a, as a group, we should make it act to be cleaner than that in that regard.
Go ahead, Steve.
I just get a little soapbox I have, because this is challenges that committees all over the place have been having with Zoom. First of all, you can turn off the chat.
Yeah, turn off. That was good. Sorry, both of you and Andy.
So, when, when you are, and it is, I mean, there are committees where it happens even when they were in person and they had their phones and stuff, you know. But when, when you're looking at text messages or the chat, what you're doing is allowing the public to participate in the meeting without permission of the chair, right? And, and in some cases, if it's text messages, it's, you're allowing the people that are privileged enough to have your contact information to participate in the meeting without the permission of the chair. So, just like from the Robert's Rules perspective, that's, you know, not following Robert's rules, and then, as Dr. Tappel says, there's also the open meeting law issue of, of, those are actually public, you know, public could become public documents. So, I really discourage that ability to have the public participate outside of the way that they would participate if you were in person and if we were in a COVID environment.
Is there established policies to identify that issue and challenge so that, so committees are all dealing with it? Do not allow on every committee, probably in this. So, is there evolving kind of policy or to address that, to ensure that it's understood? Or is it just take it, take it committee by committee like that?
But, yeah, more take it committee by committee. I mean, committees establish protocols, like, we, our phones will be off, like, wait, as I said, sometimes it was even an issue when people, like, had their phones at the table and they'd be looking at them, or the computer office and they'd see messages come in. So, committees might have protocols of, you know, our, our, um, our phones will be off. You know, sometimes people say, well, I need it on, I might have to deal with a family emergency, right? But if you're home, you really don't need your phone on in the middle of a meeting to deal with something, because you're already home. So, sometimes I think it's built into the protocols that people will understand and, you know, set a protocol with each other that we won't be looking at, I guess, texts, really, are they technically social media? I don't know, but that, you know, we'll stay off all of the media except what's going on at the meeting, at the meeting.
Michael, and I'm glad you're bringing this up, because people that are messaging us, you know, during meetings, might think that the information is privileged or private, when in essence, it's not, you know, so, it's something that they're telling us, they don't want everyone else to know. They shouldn't be telling us because it could be an issue. So, you know, again, we all have our stances and we all have our, our thoughts, but when you share it during an open meeting, it's, it's, it's open. So, that's something I think is great for, for not just us to know, but anyone else that communicates with us. Again, an equity issue. Not everybody has our, although they do, because it's online, but not everybody goes online to get our information, but they'll think that how directed is, is not on the very best. And it reflects the chair. And how do you know all of it?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know necessarily that there needs to be additional language. I mean, the, the comment is there, I just think we, we just need to grab on to the, you know, sort of current day, uh, you know, sort of implementation of that, of that language. That's all. I don't think there's, I might argue there's issue with that.
But I think just to reiterate the issue, it is all voidable, and so, it's not only voidable on, we may get all the messages, we might even have responded to the messages, but every message coming in can be on the front page of Boston Globe or the Daily Item. So, I don't think, I think vitally at some point, anybody that's texting us and reaching out to us or social media directly related to the meeting can be void, because it's part of the meeting. And if they're directly related responding to a statement that any one of us made, while I don't agree with your statement, and whatever's on that can be just public. So, just as if they were a public meeting, that public statement would be, you know, just because of having gone to the chair doesn't mean that it's not part of the meeting because that transactional word. And so, I think that's really, not only that we understand the protocol fully than everybody else, but weighing in on these responses on social media, sometimes things they wouldn't want to say in public, I mean, it's, as everyone does, not just in meetings, people do that and don't understand that it's there forever. I always tell my children, when you put it out there on social media, it doesn't go away, it's there, even though you think it isn't. So, I think it's just, just to reiterate, I agree, we probably don't need to change it, but I think we need to be very aware, and maybe as part of my opening at the meetings, I can, you know, make a statement related to that, indicate that, so people understand it. So, that would, that's not change the protocol, but that's not, you know, opening each meeting, maybe it makes sense, and I'll work with John, we'll do, maybe put some language together to clearly articulate what public, you know, is a public meeting, kind of, instead of, if the business meeting, not a public meeting, like, public comment is quite a jury.
Yeah, I, I think it's all, I think they're points, I, we agree that we have the principles here, and that it's about finding the purpose of the new scenario. And I think that's a good idea, Mayor, about the land and ground. I also think it's helpful, when we do that, to be able to remind them, like, where they tend to, but they're right. And, and we, you know, we swing between different scenarios, have to have a form, or have to have, you know, from here to do that, and, and, you know, I think when you make that effort, which is, this isn't the right channel, but here's the, here's the, here's the one.
I mean, when the meeting is adjourned, they can send whatever information they want to us. But every meeting, I guess from when the meeting is open to when the meeting is adjourned, they're participating in this new world of technology in a public way.
Right, right.
But you're right, I mean, they can be jacked by phone, by, you know, twenty-four seven, except during the timing of the meeting, that it becomes a part of the public, you know, the public forum or discussion, right? I think that's a good point to share.
Any other discussion on the rest of this?
Give one more, Mayor, but, yeah, just quickly, in the first bullet, the last part of that sentence talks about treating everyone with dignity and respect, even in times of disagreement. I mean, I think, I think we as a, as a, uh, as a body have encountered that, and we're probably going to, you know, many more times in the future, encounter, you know, issues or proposals where there's not disagreement. I expect that. And I don't think, I know that I appreciate what Senator Castellano said, that everybody cares. I don't see disagreement as a, a function of not caring, I see it as a function of having a different viewpoint on it, and I respect viewpoints that are, that are not aligned with mine. That doesn't mean I'm not going to passionately argue for the ones that I believe in, but I respect the others. And, you know, I would say, you know, one of the real painful experiences through this was to hear back from members of the community, community that members were impugning my integrity, calling me untrustworthy and calling me a liar. I, I, I don't, if, if a committee member has that viewpoint, I can respect that you have that viewpoint, I'm probably going to disagree with you, but I think I should at least have the opportunity to hear it directly from you first, rather than from other people in the community. And upon certain members to, to express that directly, but I will, I think that needs to be said here. And if ever you feel like I am not treating you with this, with respect, and, and with dignity, I want you to call me so that I can have an opportunity to have that conversation with you, and then apologize if I've, if I've done that, because that's, that's not who I am as a person, not who I am as a professional. So, I, I don't think this language needs to change, but I think this needs to be brought out here as something that we, you know, we reset around. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Tappel. I just, I just want to make a point, because I've been around this longer than anyone else, politics and policy gets very passionate, and, you know, and I think that passionate as you get is important, and always remember that it's not personal, it's passionate argument on your policy, and I think you addressed the concerns about whether or not this issues individually, but I just think sometimes we, we get so caught up in our passion that we lose sight of the personal connection, and I was thinking in a broad term, I'm not necessarily talking about the committee, but I think the, the division that's happened nationally is that we have identified our politics as personal, not politics and policy disagreements as passionate arguments for all of the issues. And, you know, I'm speaking in a broad term here, but I think it's important to know that, that it's not healthy for our country to have the kind of division we have when it's not about, it should not be about personal, it's about people's strong feelings about trying to make things better. And so, again, I, I think we have, you know, the honor to serve with all of you, I think we've built a real trust here between all of us, and Dr. Tappel, I'm, sometimes the passion gets, gets, gets pretty high, but I think we all have to understand that we're all here and we're trying to do the right thing, and even though we strongly disagree with, because we disagree based on policy.
If you had Tip O'Neil or Ted Kennedy, and they could come in and give us a little work job, because then afterwards, they were all, you know, embracing, but of course, now nobody can embrace anything, so. I think we've all done the best that we could possibly have done under the circumstances.
Challenge is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think he's a great point, and I'm glad Dr. Tappel brought that up, and I think it's an important one. And, you know, the, the, what I would say too about those policy disagreements is, you know, that, that's part of our obligation as leaders is to put those into, channel them to the right places, right? And, you know, I think that's, that's, we can role model that of, well, I, we get feedback from people saying, look, I, I keep, I, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you, I'm going to bring this up for the meeting and substitute on and so forth. And, 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 you know, related to the point about transparency of taking our, our challenges and being open about them, sharing with them, so people can see that we're taking them seriously and working to address them, I think that's important. You know, I, I think that also means that for some of those difficult issues, we need to make sure that we do them as a group, you know. I think that's, that's, that's the right, uh, that's the right way to take, I think that's helpful way to attention at the right time, and sort of give that an outlet, that people, we can hear what one another is saying and thinking and have those conversations together. And, and like I said, role model, we're getting input about disagreements with policy to sort of be able to express those openly, so that people can hear their concerns being addressed. And, you know, the other thing too is that sometimes, you know, we're, we're, we're in this and we're, we have experienced exchanging views and disagreeing, I think sometimes, you know, outside, observers can see disagreements happening at policy level and think there's something personal happening. So, you know, I just be careful that when, when, when things like that, like, you and I could have a conversation that disagreed, and then someone would think, oh, they're, they're like in a fight or something like that, when that's not what's going on.
Michael? And, and, just to continue on with the training movement, I think that if you look at the three, first bullet point to the sub-section, I think that will be changed that we may do, we're going to be honest about the assessment of our needs. That goes into exactly with the training movement, same with the transparency, the trust, obviously, we need to be honest about the needs, because in order to make laws a priority, that's one of the things we're objective, which we want, we need to restrict all our students, and we, we have to work together to try to rectify and provide that environment that they need to grow and advance in our school. And we need to do so, again, in a, in a, in a normal way, because obviously, we're elected officials, and you're a superintendent, you know, so, you know, we have a job to do. It's a hard, hard job, you know, everyone I talk to, and you probably all here too, is, is it the school committee, the highest job in the, in city government, because you have, you know, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of kids that you need to worry about as well as their parents and guardians. So, it's definitely a, a, a hard, a hard, hard thing to do. I mean, COVID didn't help at all. It, it, and I think that we took on a lot of responsibility during this past year, even some of our responsibilities were able to be in person and, and when it came to negotiations and whatnot. And, and, you know, I think that we all appreciate that, the fact that, I've never been likely by you, so, you know, I can't be, I mean, I can't relate to that part, but I think that Um, but I think that, um, uh, for the most part, uh, again, I, I love this group meeting. I tell people all the time, I, I, I'm the luckiest person to have this group meeting because we do respect, um, and, and, um, and, and can support one another. I think that's important.
No other discussion? I think we are ready to accept this without changes. Last section. We have a, a short break. I was gonna just skip that, so, uh, before we get into the goals, we want like a ten minute break. That's too much. Let's, let's say a ten minute break.
Does this require a vote or is it gonna be on the next goal again?
Yep. But while, while we, uh, clean it up and give you a clean version and then we'll, we'll put it on the agenda. So we'll come back here in five hours. The work, the work I know. On this, on this agenda is the goal?
And creating the.
Uh, you got started, John, sorry?
Sure.
Oh, you know, I'm not gonna do it on the.
Okay, so my job here is really to set the table for the discussion and then let the discussion happen.
Right, yep.
So, just to remind you, when we're talking about goals, we want to make sure that there's that alignment within the district, that you have your strategic objectives and the superintendent's goals are gonna be extremely closely aligned to those strategic objectives. Uh, along with any goals that you have and your school improvement plans should also align back to that. Superintendent's gonna be working with the administrators to make sure that goals are aligned back. Administrators for your teachers and the ultimate overarching mission and goal of continuous improvement is student achievement. So, the, the educator evaluation has a five step cycle. The self, self-assessment, goal planning and development, implementation, mid-cycle review and final evaluation. You're right now in that goal setting and current development state, which is what you're gonna be talking about today. So, if you remember the, the document, I think we've been through this since a bit a while, um, that, that, that the educator evaluation has that two-part tool. The first part of the tool is the, is the SMART goals with, uh, the student learning goal and district improvement goals. And then the second part is the standards, the four standards. So, when you're thinking about educator evaluation, when you're thinking about putting together all the pieces, you really want, this is a goal-driven document and project because it's the goals that are unique to win and the, that's what's gonna drive your district forward. Standards are the same for every superintendent throughout the state. Um, important, but really the focus should be on the goals and when you're thinking about the standards, it's how do they support the goals that you have. So, just a reminder of the standard, there's, there's the four standards. Each of the standards is broken down into indicators and each of the indicators has a descriptor of what it looks like on a, um, unsatisfactory, or, you know, up to a, uh, exemplary level, from unsatisfactory up to exemplary. Uh, and the reason I bring up the standards is when you're thinking about the goals, you should also be thinking about what are the indicators that you wanna look at associated with those goals. So, rather than just focusing on the goals and then thinking about the indicators when you get to the end of the evaluation, really think about them at the beginning. Um, and if you remember from before, there's a, a lot of, um, there's a lot of different indicators under each standard. You do not have to evaluate on every indicator. What we suggest is first establish your goals, first decide what your goals are, then look at a limited number of indicators that tie to the goals, make sure there's at least one for every standard. Uh, but I think if I remember before, Dr. Tuckwell, you're getting a little too ambitious on thinking indicators. Don't let them do that. Keep them limited, um, to ones that really tie to the goals. So, when you're thinking about establishing the goals, you want to be thinking about the outcomes. What will change? How will we be different? How will we be better if these goals are accomplished? Not just a task list, but what will those tasks accomplish? Uh, but again, not thinking too many indicators among the standards. And you might have been in a discussion about how will we know? How do we, you know, we're not flying on the wall. Uh, we don't see all this work happening, so what Dr. Tuckwell, can you show us that will help us understand that this work is progressing and these goals are being met? And that can help Dr. Tuckwell to think about that question. And I think it also helps you understand exactly what the goal is intended to accomplish so that all of you have that sort of same idea in your head and you have to develop different ideas amongst the seven of you about what actually the goal means and is to accomplish. And then be thinking about, um, you know, what are the presentations we get during the course of the cycle that will help us understand that the progress is being made? So, you're not thinking about just when the goals are set and just at the end. And that is what I hope.
Dr. Teller?
Yeah, so, uh, with that, with the tables set, um, just going back to the, uh, the cycle, um, we're at the point of identifying goals. Goals for, uh, the current school year. Uh, if you recall sort of the rhythm of the evaluation of the superintendent, typically engage in the, uh, evaluation in the fall for the previous, uh, school year. And so, it's at that point in the fall where you, um, you know, look at the goals of my, uh, or the districts, uh, work toward meeting them and then you look at the, uh, indicators, uh, at the side, uh, where I follow that continuum of unsatisfactory, um, I'm sorry, the standards, uh, unsatisfactory to exemplary. But today's focus is just around goals. And, uh, I think I need to say at the outset that, um, uh, it's late, right? It's, it's April, uh, which I, I was just asking Dorothy, is this kind of what you're planning statewide? Or at least, uh, you know, in your travels in, in, yeah, you know, it's like to look at, uh, other districts, January, February, they're presenting goals for the school year, some are doing it later. We all agree are, um, but what these goals reflect, uh, is not just, you know, a, a March or April conversation. These are conversations and work, uh, and folk art who's engaged in, uh, since the beginning of the school year. And so what I'd like to do, and you'll notice at the top it's in red, it says draft. Um, this is just my recommendation, uh, for goals, but certainly it is ultimately, uh, up to you. Uh, but I'd like to walk you through them, take your feedback, take suggestions, uh, with hopes that we can, uh, finalize something that can be, uh, talked about and approved at a, at a, um, subject. Let me just pull this back up so that, since we say, okay, so, typically, or at least since I've been here as superintendent, uh, our student learning goal has, uh, the language at the top has been the same, uh, to increase achievement for all students. And then we identify some indicators of that. Uh, and over the past two years, uh, those indicators have been focused on, um, English learners and their progress towards English language proficiency, uh, and, uh, special education students and their performance on the NCAS. This is a year unlike, uh, no other. Uh, we don't have data from the previous year necessarily to, to make goals around. I mean, if I was a vet man, I would say we're probably going to have NCAS this year, but there's still a pretty, uh, significant, um, push to do something different around it, whether it's doing them in the summer or doing them in the fall. And so I didn't wanna get involved in like, uh, if then goals. Uh, I thought we would, uh, focus on something that quite frankly, every principal, uh, in the district currently has as their goal and that's what's reflected here, uh, around attendance. Uh, some people might, and I, I think this group is particularly involved in their understanding of attendance and what that means. Um, and this year in particular, given that we were full remote, attendance was primitive. Um, our efforts to engage and outreach, uh, to families, uh, intervene in scenarios where, uh, kids were not attending, we set a really high goal of, uh, ninety percent, the average daily attendance across the district. That includes elementary, which is typically over that, uh, and secondary, which is typically under that. Uh, but we thought that this was an ambitious goal to set this wide weekend, one that we stepped back in the fall. What you see there in terms of the key actions should not be new to you. And these are things that we sort of talk about, uh, in updates around reopening, um, and, uh, in large part, uh, what we've been talking about, uh, since my first year as superintendent is around, superintendent around the Every Student Every Day Initiative. Uh, again, we see, uh, attendance as, uh, critical, uh, for, for all student outcomes, but also reflective of the cases where it's not happening at every high level. Um, it, it, it's, uh, reflective of, uh, issues, uh, in the home or, or, or deeper, uh, concerns that they're addressing. So, um, that's what we're, what I'm proposing as a, um, as a learning goal for the year. It's anchored, uh, in a plan. I can stop there and we can have a discussion or I can go through the whole thing and then we can take it all together. It's up to you.
Any questions that should be discussed at all, Michael? Sorry. Uh, I'm sorry, Lorraine, I missed something. I apologize. So, Michael, Lorraine?
Oh, I didn't ask.
I'm good now, but I gotta speak. So, uh, the key indicators, uh, that, that established systems of attendance and family outreach can hit at least ninety percent attendance per day. Can you, uh, describe to us, um, obviously the surprise of attendance is an extremely important position in the district? Um, what, what does that look like, uh, so far through this year, um, with Zoom and, and more online technology? Um, because obviously in person, you know, you know, they can go out and, and speak to the kids with Zoom. What does it look like? And, um, what is your, um, thought process still on the second position? Is it whether or not it's needed based off of what, what happened this year?
Yeah, so, so keep in mind that, uh, we've been with one supervisor of attendance, uh, since, uh, before the pandemic, PK and last year. Uh, and, you know, I, if she's watching this this morning, I'm gonna be upset with her. She needs to take her time. The Christmas fair has been amazing, uh, in terms of her work. But the, 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 um, sort of, uh, protocols around, uh, intervening when there are issues, uh, around attendance, uh, some of those carried forward this, this year that we've used in previous years. I mean, it starts with telephone calls. We now have the opportunity, uh, to engage in a, you know, sort of a more personal way through a video, uh, teleconference, uh, which, uh, we found, uh, over the course of the year, uh, that outreach, uh, has been really effective. Uh, and we've seen higher degrees of, um, uh, you know, not needing to reschedule, uh, higher degrees of actually connecting with families and having those conversations. Uh, the supervisor attendance is still, uh, responsible for supporting the data meetings in each school around attendance and the intervention effort. Um, it's a heavy load for one person, uh, and twenty-five schools. So, I see the addition of the second person, uh, really supporting that work and making, um, you know, it, it is making it more effective. Um, so I don't know if that, that answers, uh, you know, the answer to your question.
Thank you. Ryan, Joe?
Now, my first question was with the, the, um, the, the second position. I'm glad to hear that and I've worked with Kristen often and she's very resourceful, very, um, very passionate and, and very, and, and very thorough, um, when, what we're seeing, but even beforehand, obviously she's, she's a great asset to this organization. So, when, when it comes to the climate and culture, um, when it looks, we're, we're looking at professional staffing that needs, aren't we? I know before probably we were gonna hire more social workers. We'd be right before the pandemic, I think we were in a negotiation. Everyone was confetti in the air. We were gonna be, I, I remember definitely Ken Powers is part of that and we had a lot of, uh, good things happen. Are we gonna continue? And are we gonna be looking to?
Yeah, so, uh, keep in mind that at the beginning of the school year, we did add social workers to make sure that there was at least one at each school to ensure that, you know, that clinical support was there, uh, from the very beginning. We knew, uh, it, you know, the writing was on the wall long before the school year started. I mean, as we look back at last year, that there needed to be a robust outreach effort. Uh, there were gonna need to be clinical support needs. Uh, we tried to prepare for that, uh, right at the beginning of, of, of the school year. You got a memo from me, boy, I don't know how long ago that was, uh, right before the first posting, which was March something or other, uh, indicating that we intended to post, uh, positions that were part of this, uh, Student Opportunity Act plan, uh, in preparation for, I mean, this is ahead of our approval of the budget, but it looks like we're, uh, in good shape, uh, to be able to accommodate, uh, those positions. It's not, it's not the number that was in the plan. I believe that was thirty-nine. Uh, it was a, a little bit less than that, but certainly a number that will create, uh, and again, this is for next year, uh, that will create a, a pretty robust system of support, uh, for, for kids. So, we're, we're excited about that, uh, but we do have, uh, a solid core of, of social workers right now. We just look forward to building on.
And, and that's excellent because four years ago when I started, um, the, the plans and just when folks talk about, you know, what you wanna do in public office and to be able to actually see it come to fruition. Um, it's very, it's, it's very rewarding, very fulfilling and, and it's, it's such a necessary, uh, need in this district, especially, um, as we, you know, we, we talked about, you know, folks going to buzz on a social emotional work. What, what does that mean? I think, I think you've demonstrated actual steps in the care and school curriculum, uh, with the, the staff hires and the, the investment, um, that the Student Opportunity Act has provided for us is really borrowing state legislation and, and the mayor and, and the unions. It's just, it was just such a collaborative, uh, focus on just, just improving the quality of life to, to get students to our, you know, to get students success. Um, I come from that background, the other side of the track where, yeah, school is my home. I stay at the athletic all day. I would never really, I, I, that was my everything to me and, you know, that was a, it's a very important piece to, um, what we do here at many public schools and to see that robust outreach and protocol support initiative is, is, is important. Uh, also just to highlight the importance of, of keeping that attendance initiative as we moved out years ago, keep that momentum going. It's gonna be even more necessary, uh, to get people back in routine. And also, you know, those folks who, um, who not necessarily really, you know, missed school, but to kind of get that, 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 uh, that ritual, that camaraderie, that culture, that, that tradition. And to bring back mental health, mental health is very important. And I think, um, I think when we have kids going to school and, and seeing that, you know, the hard work, that's, that's a big thing, that's a big situation, that's a very good, a good indicator that we are, uh, we're moving in a, in a healthy direction. So, but it's gonna be upheld.
It, it will be, uh, from multiple standpoints and I, I would just want caution or offer the, a caution around the availability of that particular professional. I'm not the only one who's saying we're prioritizing, you know, clinical supports in schools and Boston just posted ninety positions for next year. It, it is going to be a highly sought after, uh, position, which is why I asked that we get that in the early post so we can start as quickly as possible. Uh but but, you know.
Well, that's why I brought up the staff, these, I'm a very, that's why I actually, when I when I I saw Boston, I saw a lot of, I around the whole district. Um folks are really rolling that out, you know. I just mean, I I support that, and I support that a hundred percent, and that's a very important feature to uh I think the student learning goal that you have uh brought forth through your draft.
Yeah, I was gonna worry.
Thank you. Um I just wanted to to specifically talk about that, the first key action there, that outreach thought, I think that, I think that's terrific. I just think it's a good example of having people and and being close attention with, and then also realizing that how to change anything to empower people to help achieve it. Um and I think it's also hopefully something, you know, another thing that is coming out of our experience over the last year, um it's that that work to to provide for people, we need to provide, we need to put significant resources behind that to to let people do it, and that everything we do is to be able to have it easily accessible in multiple languages. Uh and so I just wanted to say I feel that, so you know, I think it's, I think it's important. I'm gonna agree with my colleagues.
Right?
Um I also think it's really important. I was just wondering, did the um supervisor provision officially get posted this week on Friday?
Uh I didn't say it'd go out on Friday. Uh Kim or Deb, do you wanna help me with that? That doesn't seem to fit.
It go out, it did go out this week, this past week. Yep, it went out.
Okay, um one thing I wanna reiterate about this, on the sixteenth, when I first stood on the city, Jared and I went to a workshop that was held by the N S.
Am I gonna say it here?
Yep. And um he sat down, and the number one issue was social emotional awareness in the F D L. And from that, I'm so happy that I just picked a goal, that I have Carolyn Troy, now I have a director of that, or executive director, someone. Uh but and then social work is now added on to it. So I really love seeing this development to really reach all our students' emotional needs. I know of a little second grader that had them sleeping all this week because she's so nervous about next week.
Sure, sure.
And um it is really is an issue, and people are really, is the really nervous about going past their first day.
Yeah, well.
I'm glad that we addressed it, I'm glad we got another student. I would think. And with that, buddy.
Thank you. Heather, it was great. Donna?
Um I think I think this is a good good goal, but I almost feel like it should be like some academic goal, whether it's uh, you know, um whatever it is, but it's some sort of academic goal. But um did Desi always require us to be like at ninety five percent attendance, and have they, you know, reversed that? Remember, they, it was actual, I remember, because we had this goal before our attendance, you know, because we would have attendance, sometimes we're in the high eighties maybe, but you know, we had to work really hard to bring the attendance up. But I thought that Desi had something more like a ninety five percent attendance.
Uh I don't believe in all of them, but I don't recall that. I mean, there is a uh chronic absenteeism um accountability feature, but.
It has, it has more to do with the chronic absenteeism rates. Um and it is part of our accountability, and they figure, and they calculate our chronic absenteeism for each and every school, and it's part of their accountability rating.
Yeah.
Do you, do you ever do you recall uh a Desi mandated or Desi-driven standard of ninety five percent?
When, yeah, when um as part of the accountability system prior to doing the chronic absenteeism, there was an uh an attendance rate that was part of the accountability system, and that was um I believe it was ninety five percent. You had to be ninety five percent or more to get the points towards uh accountability. But then they removed that and went to the chronic absenteeism. It's a whole different system now.
No, that's that's fine then. Um you know, if it's a chronic absenteeism rate, should we be mentioning something like that in there?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could.
The only thing is, we have a lot of parents that follow us in regards to, how can they constantly be promoting my child? You know, everybody is really concerned, you know, I think in particular, lots of them are like more the first grade parents, you know, like did about this first grade, then they will push to second grade, and now they're gonna be a third grader, and some of them are like, they don't, they're really behind, you know, so. Um I'm just, I don't know, you know, how how you would do that, but at least try to, you know, something out in that area, just uh because those are important years, and you know, your child ends up in third grade, and they really still aren't reading, or they're really weakened now, or whatever.
Yeah.
And parents are concerned about that, that they feel like their child's just being moved on, because, you know, what are we gonna do? We can't keep them all back.
Yeah.
Because you keep them all back, you don't have to root for them.
Well, and and uh the research is overwhelmingly in support of um or overwhelmingly um discourages retention.
Right.
Uh because it it actually does not, it it doesn't uh yield the kinds of outcomes that you think that, hey, my kid missed fractions, you know, why are you gonna move him on to the to the next grade? Uh the research supports uh acceleration strategies when you bring um you know, some of the 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 key content and skills that were missed, or other students not showing strengths on in the in the next year.
Right.
And 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 so to your point, um number three is really decide on the next page, really desire to do that.
Yeah, I was looking at that, yeah.
So so and and I'm and from that, um member of the phone, what I would say is probably some language it needs to go in, not just beyond developing it, there needs to be a robust um outreach around explaining to people like what this really means for their kids, uh you know, next year. And how we're going to ensure that uh you know, we are closing gaps, uh you know, sharpening skills that, you know, maybe. And I'll also say, um some kids are 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 doing just great, you know what I mean? In remote learning and 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 ready to go on, even though their parents might necessarily, they might not see it or 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 don't believe it, um you know, kids are actually moving along this time, so uh I think that needs to be a part, I appreciate you raising that. I think that needs to be a part of number four around specific, you know, uh actions around outreach, you know, whether it's town halls or or a, you know, a reader.
Reassuring them that, you know, that your child will catch up, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Um you, you know, I'm I'm okay with ninety percent attendance rate, but it it we have a little warning in there. You know, it says it's the chronic absenteeism rate. That's only my opinion, but if others don't feel that same way.
Well, it will, what it would, what it would be is um uh I think I I would take the the accountability requirement around chronic absence, we just would just lay that right in there.
Yeah.
So 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 absolutely.
Because I wouldn't want us not to be keeping our eye on it.
We have Michael on the radio.
And um yeah, I thought the same thing as with Mr. Polo, um and obviously, we didn't get to the second page yet, but I I I we did give a presentation recently that talked about um uh developing and 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 discussing what the summer's gonna look like for our students and working with stakeholders and all, so I like that. Um I I'd like to see more of a formality within um the goal, if if possible. Um and then um one of the things that I think um is gonna be different than years before, I think um uh it's gonna involve you as well as Mr. McQ, in making sure that we um are still providing the meals during the summer. I have a feeling that because uh because families have been utilizing the service throughout the year, they may have not been the people that went during the summer, so it might en- uh enhance or increase the number of people that are coming for for the meals.
Yeah.
So um if we can have that somewhat as a as a as a plan, that'd be great. You know, we're we're focusing on the education, um we're focusing on the meals because we can't teach them we fit. And um obviously, I think those things, I think go around um what we've been preaching for the past four years, which is uh networking and working with community stakeholders, because we saw how far we were um this past year, um with our kids still going to their programs and and going to school and getting the additional assistance they need it. So I I I like it, um um I like Donna's uh suggestion, and um we could just have those components, thank you. Uh it's a great document.
Lorraine?
Um I also wanted to feedback on Donna, Donna's suggestion, and the V A seven year anxiety. If you remember, we implemented an iReady assessment, which was according to um the goal model, it would identify immediately that, oh, they don't get the fractions, oh, they don't know this math. It would identify immediately, my only concern was like, and the um budget, if the need to wait, well, if they want for high school.
Yeah, there is. Kim, do you wanna speak to iReady and its?
We couldn't hear what was being. Can't hear it, Pat.
She she was asking about uh iReady and the assessment feature for high school.
Oh, that, well, that would be Deb. So iReady is across the board, but in high school, we only did iReady to grade ten with the intent that each year we will expand it till eventually it would be all across high school. Um the schools are looking at that data now, um you know, to identify where the gaps are in say, you know, in math and in E L A. Uh and there is ongoing conversations now around summer credit recovery um as well as uh some in-person summer learning for our level one and two um student uh English language students.
But um, Deb, can you hear me?
And at the elementary, and at the elementary level. Okay, I'm sorry.
And the high school, um I'm just confused because like, Juan, in the budget, it said it's a gate to age of our day. And someone brought it up to me, like, it's not high school model, that there are other high school models that could be more helpful to the high school.
I I I'll have to go back and look at that. Uh and Kevin, uh who's on and actually sitting in his office, can you just take a peek at the uh what what iReady reads on the curriculum lines?
I will. I will say, Pat, what she may be talking about is that the uh the diagnostic goes all the way through high school, which is assessing the student on the skills, but the inter- instructional piece only goes up, it only goes to grade eight, I believe. Uh the high schools have access to it for students who are falling, you know, eighth grade or below, that they would have access to it, but if a student is higher than grade eight uh in e- any of the E L A or math skills, they don't need the instructional component of it. The teacher would then work with them on the gaps. And we have a different math program in high school around that. Right, which is I X L. I X L, right.
I think that's the problem that's. Thank you.
John?
Uh just a quick point, Mr. Polo, did you get your other thoughts? Uh addressing the parents' concerns of what's happened this year. I think we're gonna put some focus on the students themselves. My granddaughter, who's an honor roll student, who feels she's nervous about going back to school because she and and missed the whole year, she's done all the Zoom requirements.
Yeah.
Done a bit of she and her own life, and sees that she didn't participate this year.
Yeah.
And I think when we, when they come back, we gotta give a little pep talk of
Yeah.
doing, to ensure them that they, if they did the Zoom requirements, they did do what they were gonna do this, but they can't.
That that's a, that's a really good point. Uh you you know, I had a um as a uh sorry, in other words, a a senior uh who's got fantastic grade, reached out to me and said, I'm not ready to go on to the next step. You know, I've been in remote learning, like this really, the confidence wasn't there. The action is asking to repeat the year. I think, you know what I mean? I'm, thank goodness, we have that girl in college promise, and we have that opportunity for that student to remain a twelve year, take college classes, which he's uh excited about, but for other students, this is kind of what I was um maybe in our articulately uh referring to on Thursday, when you asked a question, Jared, about um the academic assessment and how we're using data, and I was saying, we're just focusing on getting kids back, we're getting them acclimated. That's part of that effort, right? To get them sort of settled and understanding, like, oh, you learned some things, you definitely learned some things, you your your skills are sharpened um you know, in their transition back. So but I but I, uh additional emphasis on that, um never.
Hello, Deputy Superintendent, uh Jerro, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, if you had a comment on that, Deb.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole thing, Pat. No, it's hard, it's hard for us to hear and follow, it really is.
So we we, this is the point of uh clarification, um or the note. We use this on our Monday morning meetings, but we're, it's a smaller group, and we're a little bit uh closer together. Uh still sits deep, a small group.
We're, background noise, Pat. It's huge background noise, it's because the window's, partially because the window is open.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't know if there's much we can do about that, but I'm.
Oh, I know, I know. I, if, can you, can you tell me, like, what, what it, what the question was?
No, they they thought you wanted to say something. They thought you had your hand up.
Now I don't remember what I had my hand up for, sorry.
Just one point, um um, Mr. Polo, you mentioned um but something that was more maybe related to academics of the student learning goal.
Yeah.
Um it's it's not unusual to see a student learning goal be something that sets the table for student learning, like if it has to be an attendance to learn, or the teachers need some sort of professional development or curriculum upgrade. So it's not unusual for it to not be like that directly.
Oh. I know what it was. I know what it was, I was wanted to say. I wanted everyone to know that we, Kim and I both have uh communicated out to our principals to in turn communicate to their teachers about having grace and compassion for the students returning to school, um and the importance of, you know, supporting them through the adjustment of coming back into the schools to learn and the struggles that some have had, um you know, through this remote learning. So I just wanted you all to know that, you know, that is the messaging that is going out, is to, you know, we need to support our students, and if a student who's who said, I'm gonna be in person, comes in person, but then, you know, is struggling with being in person and goes remote, like doesn't show up in person and but logs on remote because they're more comfortable, that we need to have grace and compassion and allow them, we mark them present, there's no uh issue with them doing that, uh because it's much more important that the students are in school and engaging with us than it is on whether or not they're showing up in person or showing up remote. Um we need to support our students through this.
Okay, Donna, did you finish your thought? Michael?
Uh and and just to piggyback off of what what Deb um just said, I I think that um it's an adjustment for everybody, as well as our educators, so that same grace and compassion that we want them to convey to the students, we also, on a higher level, need to con- uh convey that to our teachers and make sure that they have the support to adjust. Aside from the tools that we're providing, I know that uh we talked about professional development, and you you were in agreement that that's something that we should definitely do, but this is gonna be a lot of things taking place in a short period of time, and we can't forget that part.
Yeah.
And you know, I I hope to see and 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 the district's actions, um because it's gonna blow down to the students.
If I may, just just really quickly, I I could not agree more, and and I don't remember what meeting it was, but in a meeting, um I talked about um, you know, the simultaneous instruction uh launch and this being a third thing, uh and you know, this is a figure of speech, anyway. It's another thing that we that we have to still up on, and uh you know, we've been exceptionally patient and, you know, realizing that it's a, it's an additional skill set. Um all of the work that goes into the logistics and the safety around kids transitioning back, uh and then the fact that it's April, right? This is usually the time, even about uh when you launch the school year, when everybody's fresh, and they come back in September. Even about, uh, when you launch the school year, when everybody's fresh, when they come back in September and you're learning new things, it's great. Uh, we're, we're doing a lot of those things, uh, you know, in the, in the, almost the fourth quarter of the school year. People are tired, you know, and so-
You have the channels, you have the face masks, you have-
Yeah, we've done all that.
Sure. No, I'm saying the teacher.
That's the book.
And the bathroom floor, it's something that, the, the kids are fun with their masks, it's something that, in addition to that, they have a camera here and kids are online. That's, you know, that's the grace, the fashion and the understanding. We're, we're here in offices. Well, they're in, in the classroom, they have the direct services. So it's, it's that grace and compassion and support that I think we, we spoke about on Thursday and, and we're gonna continue to speak about. Because again, it's that short period of time.
Yeah.
With a lot going on.
A lot. Agreed.
I, uh, I just wanna say what Deb said, um, you know, was great. You know, you can stay home or you can come in, you know, and, and vice versa. But that to me would start to get chaotic if everybody just wakes up in the morning and says, I'm late for school, so I'm, I'm just gonna stay on, on the Zoom. Um, you know, I know other districts that's sort of guided by a quarter, you know, or a monthly, like, you know, you have to tell us if you're gonna be in there or you're gonna be on the Zoom. To try to get some, you know, it, it must be chaotic, that's my only thought. But I mean, if it's only, you know, a matter of one or two of the three kids that are doing that, but if, if every parent decides, oh, I can send them today, but keep them home tomorrow, because, you know.
They, they actually can't.
Yeah. That's not what I, yeah. That's not what we plan to do. We, we want, it, it does need to be controlled, but there are certain situations that may come up that are unexpected, you know, that are individualized, that we need to have grace and compassion around. Um, and so that's really where that message was coming from. Um, you know, we, we definitely are sending the message that we want them, you know, if you're saying you're in person, we want you to come in. But we also acknowledge that there could be family situations or a, a situation where they have to quarantine or, um, a situation where just emotionally they, they just can't do it that day, that we need to support the student.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you clarified it so that people, you know, if anybody's listening, doesn't think that everybody can just change by the day. Okay, thanks.
Do you have it?
I have, I have a couple of questions about the district curriculum. Do you want to present?
Yeah, I, I think if, if there's no more feedback on this, I'll, I'll, I'll go over it. Um, okay, um, so, uh, in the past, we've sort of, uh, and I, I, I know the conventional wisdom is to limit the number of goals, because how many things can you meaningfully address, uh, in, in, in a school year? And, uh, so we've done four and I kept it at four. That does not mean that there is other work happening, but these are pretty hefty, um, uh, and in many ways, values-driven, uh, uh, folkloric, uh, you know, presented for, for, for your, uh, group. So the first one, um, really just, you know, at a high level is, uh, putting a plan together, uh, to make this school year active. You know what I mean? I mean, that's what this is. Identify and implement platforms where it is missing and resources to provide optimal learning experiences for all students and beyond. And then you'll see there's a, a set of key actions. The key actions actually aren't even the complete list, but, uh, what I'm saying here is, and this is something from the very beginning that we've been working on, is how do we create an optimal learning, um, uh, scenario for kids in our district, given, uh, the context, which for us was one of, you know, very high , uh, coronavirus cases and a knowledge that we were going to be in remote learning. And so that's everything from the, uh, identification and implementation of a learning management system, you know, more robust outreach, um, uh, systems, uh, so the families, uh, can be connected and understand what's going on. Um, you know, Kevin, district coordinated yesterday. I mean, this is really more forward-looking, but it's something that started back in January around assessing our bandwidth and infrastructure needs. Um, you know, the whole prospect of now having, you know, twenty thousand devices in the district from staff and students, which we did not before, uh, there needs to be a robust plan, a substantive plan around, uh, maintenance and, uh, repair, uh, and what that schedule, uh, and what it looks like going forward. So this, this, this goal is really about building the foundation, uh, to have school, uh, this year. Why don't I go through all of them and then you all can, the second goal, um, is, uh, almost identical to a goal that we had last year around increasing the, um, uh, racial and linguistic diversity of the school district. There's a list of key actions there. Uh, you know, this is something that we really feel strongly about and really wanna continue to work on. Uh, there's some new pieces in the key actions that, uh, I, I'd be happy to report out, uh, on as we continue to engage the strategy. But, um, you know, as we, I think I've monitored, uh, more closely, uh, the hiring, um, this year than, than I ever have, uh, given the, the goal. And I've seen some real intentionality around hiring, um, people who's, uh, who can speak multiple languages and who racially reflect, uh, the community, uh, that we serve. Is there work to do? Yep. Still a lot of work to do. Uh, but, but, uh, those actions, uh, you know, re- reflect our ongoing effort. Um, number three, uh, was, you know, sort of thinking going, circling back to the conversation that happened, um, when Donna raised a question around, uh, retention. Uh, I would like by the end of this year to present to you a framework for, not just summer, I mean, you'll get the summer sooner than you will than next year. Uh, but a plan to, uh, address what we know, uh, are some concerns around, um, kids learning, uh, based on this year. Uh, and, um, I, I can tell you now that some pieces of that are coming together now and it's significant. Uh, and, and, and we're excited about it. But there's, there are pieces that we're, we'll, we'll be weaving into, uh, our effort. Um, we were just on an urban superintendent's call yesterday, where Desi's, uh, gonna be releasing a roadmap around acceleration of learning. Uh, it's actually very similar to a document that we've been using since, uh, the fall. So we, we're, we're excited, uh, to, you know, sort of pick up on new, uh, aspects of that. Uh, and then, you know, that, that last bullet, if you look on the key actions, um, that's where, that's huge, right? So thinking about, this is where, uh, and I'll channel my inner Brian Castellanos here. This is where the thinking outside of the box, uh, really happens in terms of schedule. Uh, not just at the high school level, which you remember we were talking about a lot before the pandemic. Uh, we're actually finalizing, uh, a, a new high school schedule as well, and I'll bring, uh, forward to you in short order. But also the other levels and looking around, uh, how do we create, um, systems and structures that are, uh, going to support students the most? Uh, and so my, my plan here, or the goal here, is that by the end of the year, we're able to present to you a pretty, um, robust, uh, model for the, for the following year. And then, um, um, the, the, the final goal is, you know, just really, really key. And I, uh, appreciate, um, all the conversations that we have, uh, as a group around, uh, our partnership, uh, with our families. And, uh, you know, we've already taken some steps to, um, correct, uh, shortcomings, uh, in that area with the Higher Than Welcome Center. Uh, I can tell you, it's not a mark on any one individual, uh, other than the new person. Uh, but I, I, I don't, I'm not getting the same kind of constructively critical calls from families that I used to. Um, you'll notice on our website, for the first time since I've been here, there is a prominent, uh, icon around enrolling your kid. Uh, you know, and so like the steps toward building that partnership and, uh, the director has a pretty robust proposal for, for moving forward that we're gonna try to perpetuate over the next, uh, couple of years. I'll be bringing that forward. That piece, as long as, as well as, uh, the, the work around, uh, parent liaisons in school. These are the kinds of things that really need to be, um, uh, and I'm gonna use this word, I'm gonna use it intentionally, uh, professionalized, right? Uh, parent liaison, we happen to be building, they do a great job, but there's no job description. There's been no professional development. There's been no, um, embracing of that role is really critical to what we're doing here in the public schools. Uh, and that's what this goal, uh, is all about. Each one of the goals is direct, directly tied to our strategic plan. I built with somebody, uh, earlier this week, their strategic plans, uh, have often been things that people do and they sit on a shelf and they say, yeah, we got one. Uh, but, but, but this is really trying to, um, push forward, um, an effort to meet those four objectives. So you notice there's one objective that's missing. Anybody know what that one is? Objective number three. If I remember what that is offhand. You hear about it all the time. It's, and it's the hardest one for us.
Facilities.
Facilities. Right, right, right. Conventional wisdom, uh, our, our facilitator, when we were going through the process of developing strategic plan, he was like, don't have an objective around facilities. Cause you have the least control around that. But, but here we know what the reality is, uh, and we know, uh, it needed to be there. Uh, and so these goals focus on, um, you know, what is in our control as we look ahead to next year. Um, and, uh, that's not to say that there aren't facilities improvements happening. Big ones, in fact. Uh, but that would be much akin to me stacking the deck if I said, oh, and we're going to, in these goals, we're going to fix the ventilation. Like, I didn't know that in December, not so very well. So, um, haven't answered any questions you might have. If you have.
Brian and Jared.
Dr. Tawana, thank you so much. Uh, just being very open about this document and just, I just wrote down a couple of comments.
Sure.
The way you lay out your SMART goals, it's, it's, it's very, it's, it's, it's very, very, I would just listen to how, and the way you prioritize. Um, you know, and I, I can see the equity lens, uh, very clearly all over this. Um, typically, you know, I see, you know, number one, the technology equity and you can see in the key actions, you can see the work going. It's not like you just said, you didn't just create the district's strategic plan and put it on a shelf. You can see it's alive, um, it's, it's progressing, it's moving, it's, it's constantly flowing. Uh, whenever you, it, it, it's geared to manage, um, conflicts. It's geared to take adversity and flip it in a way where you have to be solution orientated. A very strong force from the district. Um, with goal number two, I see, um, the, the fellowships, a lots of fellowship program. Is that the hundred miles to college program? Is it different fellowship?
No, this is new. Kim, do you wanna speak to that fellowship?
Yeah, abs- absolutely. So we've engaged in a partnership with Salem State. Um, fellowships have really not been a part of how we have, um, proceeded with bringing in, um, student teachers or other interns. So this will, um, give fellows a stipend to come and work with us. And the focus is on key content areas, like mathematics, but it's also focusing on bringing in diverse candidates. And we're really excited to engage in this partnership with Salem State.
I just wanna, that is put on, that is really, that is awesome. Kim, uh, that's a, that's a strong well job. You know what? All around, that's a great, that's, that's, that's very, very wonderful news.
We're very excited.
And is this, you know, and I see that it's, it's, it's engage these steps as a part of a five-year plan to, is, this is already included in the, in the district?
That's the same language that was in the goal last year, because our strategic plan, uh, is five years. I just left that there. That doesn't mean that like in five years, like-
Yeah, that's why I just want to clarify. That's why they're not there two years. Start this out. We're already, we're already moving, moving.
Yeah, I, you know, but, but it does, I mean, in every year, we, we take stock of like what's working, what's not working. Uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm hearing you point that out. I might wanna take that out of the, pick that up. Uh, because it might signal that like, oh, they're just gonna do this for five years and then like, yeah, that was nice, but now we're moving on.
And just a, just a, just a quick little form, uh, uh, goal number three, um, and I know we, we, we've had this, uh, conversation with our Ls. Um, there's definitely the growing need as, as we, you know, we've been over the years, just going through just different solutions and strategies to improve our population that we see here, uh, in the public schools. Uh, I know, when, when we say, you know, our systems, structures, is that just, that does hit the Ls, is that, is that?
It, it, it does.
Yes, no, so could we add length? Could you, in, in key actions, could we add a priority to our Ls? To see, you know, maybe we could, and solicit teacher input. I think there's also the, um, a strategy around how to hear from our Ls, the folks who interact with the Ls and just, and I, I know we, just to, I don't know if we can get specific into key actions, just so, I feel like it needs that level of attention. I think we need to put that, I think that's something that I feel is a great suggestion for, um, that I learned with the class, uh, is on the committee that we are seeing such large challenges in our L population. So I don't know, that's something that we could add in that to that.
Would, would, would you be comfortable if I said, uh, made it all encompassing, prioritizing high-need students, including students with disabilities and English learners?
Please, yes, exactly. Yeah, great.
Uh, and the other thing I would say is, uh, you know, there's always room for improvement, uh, on everything that we do. Uh, I can't walk past a chocolate chip cookie without eating, you know what I mean? I can do a food day. Uh, but, but around soliciting, uh, I can't actually, um, around soliciting input, like, we, we, we need to be better. I think some of the things that we're thinking about cannot go forward without broad feedback from staff. Thank you. Uh, Jared?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Justin Tawana, and, and I think it was a great conversation, um, with Castellanos. Um, so I agree that these are great goals, how, how the actions of the suggested, that, you know, for the council. And I think my initial read of this is that we maybe have a little bit more work to do to make the goals smart in that they're measurable and tangible. Um, and so, you know, I think part of, part of, I think our district is working for later in the year. And so it's, um, that creates a challenge, but, uh, I, I'd like to try to think about what, how, how we will know if we've achieved these goals. Um, and, and what the underlying, what, what the ultimate sort of end result that we want them to believe. Um, you know, so kind of for goal number one, I wonder if there's a way to, uh, you know, boil down what's like the, you know, the, the sensitivity, the infrastructure and the devices, like Claire said. We wanna have a hundred percent functional access, you know, by July thirty first. Or you, at, at that point of July thirty first, um, so that we know that all devices are repaired, that all the damage is resolved, something like that. Um, you know, I think the second one, um, has that, the SMART goal, the one percent here, which is great. I wonder, I tend to agree with that, I wonder if we might have a SMART goal on the logistical, statistically diverse staff as well. Um, because, uh, that's part, that's part of the goal. Um, and the, for number three, I mean, we've talked a lot about this, this kind of moving target. Um, I don't know if there's data we can take from the iReady. I would, uh, based on what we did January, hopefully by the end of the next, the next time we do it, you know, um, to make it, to make it a SMART goal. The last one is tough, I think. Um, you know, one of the things we've talked about, I mean, you remember, before, before the pandemic, the, the, the feedback that we do get, that's provided by laws, that some of the parent national sessions, um, you know, were part of the forms. And we, we, that's what it has in those, or forms, there's like a, there's a way to sort of, um, you know, uh, solicit that, that input and, and, and make it to a, make, and incorporate it to the SMART goal aspect of it. Um, either, and it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to necessarily be quantitative. Um, we can think of positive ways to, to be getting feedback, but to, to know, like, how will we know that we have trained the, the family in a partnership?
Yeah, I, I, uh, let me just respond that, that's a great, uh, the, that's great feedback. Um, and one immediate thing that I'm thinking, that has not been all- feedback, um, and one immediate thing that I'm thinking, that has not been on previous goals, just including goals, uh, you know, I've got goals, I've got actions, but I don't have that third column on the right around indicators, right, which, which I can easily add, uh, and, and, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, you have to tell me, Doris, what do you think? Um, you know, is it okay if there isn't that SMART aspect in the goal, but it's in the indicators, like, meaning like, uh, you know, the goal says, "I'm going to find a whole net platform, resource, provide optimal learning," but in the indicators, it's as evidenced by one hundred percent, you know, the seventy, seventy percent of this.
I think you meant this less exactly how it's formatted in the presentation, as long as it's.
So, so I can definitely do that, uh, and bring that forth for the committee's view, um, and, you know, the, the, one of the, uh, that's interesting, uh, I don't know why I can't stop with that. Kim, I got you, one second here, um, one of the things that, um, you know, we, we are proud of, uh, is that the, the School Messenger, um, platform for outreach to families is super robust, uh, and, uh, we've noticed, or I've noticed, um, much higher degrees of participation, uh, when we send stuff out and ask for, you know, "Hey, is your kid coming back from school?" Way higher, uh, returns than, you know, really ever before, and so, one, and this would, hmm, it's kind of hard to do this, um, because most of this goes around actions, not necessarily, and maybe I need to reword it, uh, but, but I think that, um, we're at a point now where we can solicit, you know, strong input from families around how strong each of the partnerships is, and whether or not, uh, you know, what's to be heard and needs to be met with. Uh, Kim, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to remind us also that part of this process is the, the, with each of these goals and these actions, the level of the evidence that you'll be providing the committee with to show and demonstrate how those action, how you reach that goal and how those actions have played out. That, that's, the mission of evidence piece is key, I just wanted to remind you of that.
Well, I, I think I'm telling you this is, is right, that you could say you did it, but, um, let, yeah, let's, let's have something that can be measured, um, and, and a couple things jumped out at me, um, uh, with regards to goals and the key actions. Uh, I was highly, I sincerely committed to the Welcome Center Director, I think that, um, the candidates that came were wonderful, and, and, you know, they, they put it all out, know what they believe that the district should be headed, and we picked the most qualified person, um, uh, who's great, and I guess is, is a wonderful leader and who's well. Um, and four, um, where it says strengthened family connection and partnership, I think that where, where, where we're kind of working around is the fact that, um, seventy percent of our students are Spanish, so that connection is pretty motivating their language. So, uh, we can measure certain things if we, um, are teachers provided with any set type of language translation software, or do they have a, a cell in the district that can assist them to communicate with, with families, uh, be it emails, or telephone calls or whatnot? If that's one of the things, let's do it and measure it, make sure that teachers that may not speak the same language as the parents, you know. Automatically, uh, there's a, 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 an app, I think it's a PD, where, um, professional development, where teachers can go and just learn basics, manage, to help communicate with, with, with the, the students and, and their parents.
Yep.
Um, but this might take it a, a, a level further, and I think that it's something to look into.
I just want to really quickly, so there are, um, multiple robust opportunities for staff, uh, to leverage translation supports. Uh, School Messenger, you know, you always want to be careful when you do like a Google Translate, you know, type thing, but School Messenger does have a translation feature in there, uh, that some of our native, uh, the Spanish speakers say is the texture is pretty close, uh, pretty good, so outreach that goes to families and writing, we actually have a knowledge of, uh, to like eleven or twelve languages that it can go out and just, you write it in English and it, it's translated. We also leverage, I mean, we have parent liaisons in schools, we reallocated some, um, parent professionals who are Spanish-speaking to schools to support the, the family outreach, and then we have Lions Bridge, which is a translation service, uh, that our staff have access to. What, what am I, what else am I missing, uh, given that, in terms of translation?
No, I think you covered it.
Other than that, we are, uh, with the parent liaisons, um, we are trying to come up with a plan, uh, for training, for, you know, uh, those roles, understanding the difference between interpretation and translation, um, you know, we want to build our own system of, of, you know, uh, translation opportunities, uh, that can be utilized, uh, but that's down the road, but that is something that we're looking at.
Yeah, definitely, and, and the second, um, part of my question was, um, I, I believe we need to formalize the relationship between, um, parent liaison and the Welcome Center.
Yep.
Um, it's not in here, but it's something that should be done. You know, apparently, uh, parent liaisons are really family connectors, that, that, that is how I see them, and I think that they need to be used, um, as such, and the fact that they're spread out over the city and our middle schools, uh, allows for easy access to families in those key areas. So, I, I'd love to see that as, as part of, of, of a plan with regards to, um, the development and the formalization of the roles. Um, you know, the name change would, would, you know, would help, because it's not just parents regarding, it's the revenue that they care, um, of, of our students, um, and, um, and, you know, the, the whole goal is, is to connect them to our educators, to our principals, and, and to our families, so those are the two things that we need to measure, those are the two things that we have to say in, um, in SMART goal, and I just want to, uh, stop, uh, hand off. You know, the four years that I've known you, I know that you can't walk with a coffee, because I'm never wish you have to stop for a cookie though, so that will have to, you know, what about me, I'll have to move, put that to a test.
Um, yeah, so just, just on this one, I mean, I, I, I don't, it doesn't matter to me whether it includes itself in any theater, I mean, I think, you know, we want to be smart, and, and also to the point we were teasing earlier about how to get the charging, like, when we say SMART goal, we're, we're talking about the fact that this is measurable, this is one, a number, um, and then, and the TV, I want to, say by one, we're going to achieve that. Um, and, uh, so, I mean, yeah, it doesn't matter where, where it is, but I think it's good to have that somewhere as, as the guiding. Uh, in fact, and, and evidence will certainly be helpful, but I think what we're saying to the course is, we're saying to them where we'd like that, where we're aspiring, yes, where we hopefully, that evidence will, will be set. Um, and I think that's what, that's what's, that's what, that, that, that's what that process is, when evidence does come, there might be reasons why, and numbers in play out the way we would have liked, and, and, and then we get to have that conversation with, with evidence, and I think that's the reason last time, I think, oh wow, and I think it's a good exercise.
Sure.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think, I think, I, I want to agree with you that having that measure there is important, because without that measure, there may be seven different ideas, eight different ideas about what's going to happen, and, but when you have that specific measure, then there's, there's more agreement that you got there or you didn't go where the special things are.
Um, on that number four, when you look at it, it's a strengthened family connection and partnership, but the actions are more specific to people coming in, you know, as a new person, uh, that are, that needs to touch base with the welcoming center, so, you know, let's say, you know, we have seventeen thousand kids, you have five percent, you know, coming to the welcoming center. It's just a small portion, I don't think, and before, you, you didn't have actual things in the action, which, which was more directed, you know, uh, to events, you know, at the school, I mean, obviously, that's going to be more difficult, I believe. Um, you know, it was, uh, that way, you know, we're, we're making partnerships with the families, and we're including the whole family when we get down to the school participation in particular, so I'm wondering if that's a way to measure. You know, we, uh, I remember the, uh, the EOL had a parent something or other put together.
Yep.
You know, I remember like two dates of meetings we got, and, you know, I haven't seen any dates in a long, long time.
They're in jail.
On that, so, yeah.
That's driven by law, so they, they, they have to.
Yeah, okay, so, um, you know, maybe something just, I mean, action to, that gives us measure of that, I don't know, are we thinking that that would be something, Jared? Yeah, just, uh, something that can be more measured for everybody, I mean, we know we had a problem with our, you know, pick center, and we, this is obviously a, a great, going in a great direction, let's hope that it all happens the way our vision was, but I still think that, uh, we, we're leaving out a lot, a lot of family out of the action for that.
Yeah, it, it, you know, it's, I'm thinking two things, um, well, one, uh, there are parent liaisons in every, in every school, and, and there's a specific, uh, action item around the work that they do, so there is a bar in fact there, but I agree with you about the pieces related to the, the Welcome Center, I mean, either I need to, uh, more substantively tie Welcome Center activities with the parent liaisons, uh, as you were suggesting, um, but also think about the goal, the language of the goal itself, uh, because it does give the impression that I'm doing more, you know, than, than I.
We, we should be embracing the full population.
For sure, for sure.
Of families, families, but, you know, even to me, what I hear in feedback on the liaison, sometimes it's just a, uh, they're just meeting with very few parents to, you know, on, on an issue that needs translation, is a problem, whatever, so it's not as broad.
Yeah.
The parent liaison, when you think about it, it isn't the full scope of the school, it's, it's just like an individual little help or something. And, and that's up to you, you know, up to you.
Yeah, it's up, it's up, I mean, I think what I'd like to do is take this feedback, uh, incorporate it, and then, uh, either at the next, or, or probably for the time set should be the next meeting, uh, present that to you, and, you know, if, I'll give it to you well in advance, you can give me feedback, uh, before the meeting, but, um, you know, really try to polish it at, at, at the next meeting.
I just want, um, acknowledge Donna's comment, uh, about the parent liaisons, uh, she is correct, I think, you know, it depends on the building and how the building views the role of that parent liaison, in some building, it is seen as just for translation and to work with Spanish families, when in reality, the role was developed, and I know this because as a Level Four principal, that was when they became, they, that's when they were created, um, and, you know, when, in my building, they, they were for all parents, um, it was to help assist all parents in any questions they had or needs that they had, and I just think it has evolved into, because they were Spanish-speaking, that it was just for Spanish families, and that's, and I think that's why Dr. Tuttwiler has the, the, uh, bullet point on his goals as an action, because we do need to, um, collaborate and, and make consistent, um, you know, how they're being used, uh, across the district, and that there is consistency in how they're used. So, thank you, Donna, for acknowledging that, because that is true.
That fellowship program, can you, um, can you forward to us so that we understand what it is, and there must be like some written agreement in place or something that will give us an idea? That's exciting, I'm glad.
We can do that, Mrs. Paul.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Or any, uh, I think we've, uh, we're going, we're, we're going to go through this at the next meeting, right? We're not, we're not, we're, we're going to get a, a final, a final, I suppose, and then we'll discuss in a full meeting, and then we'll approve it, so we don't have to go any further here. I think we've laid out a pretty strong framework for what we are, what the, the members, uh, that you got, the, uh, real, the, the, for, uh, for change and review, and we'll, we'll plan, I guess, on the next meeting, is that, is that my line? To, uh, as long as you find out, we'll have a, a final idea.
I was thinking that, uh, if you sent us, and, you know, we have plenty of time, maybe before that next meeting, we could all look at the indicators, come up with some ideas, and then when we're all together, we could kind of coordinate, you know, who thinks, you know, number three's false or whatever, you know, we could kind of move along without dragging it out a little longer. But we'd have to have your thing a little bit ahead of time, so that.
Yeah, I mean, does everybody agree after next meeting, it's the twenty ninth? Uh, I could probably get you, um, this updated, maybe by the end of next week, give you plenty of time to look over it, to go back. Go ahead.
Could I have a five copy?
Yeah.
I'd like to write down a brief, if Mary could draw it up.
Mike is, uh, reckless, Mike was out there for Abidé, weren't you, Mike?
You out there for Abidé, taking care of the trees.
I, I love trees, yes.
Fun story, when I worked in Chelsea, in the, reading high school or middle school, um, I started a garden club, we had a, we had that raised tree that we planted a tree for Abidé, I was at the middle school, and you and I bought the fifth grade, just gone all over.
Oh, good tree.
But, but there's a beautiful moment when we, when my husband was the city councilor over at Martin Center on Walnut Street there, he hiked a tree and saved the trees from being cut down, and he went like this national Abidé, and now he went by the other day, and all the trees are cut down. Whole city's cutting trees down.
Well, we're all the way out in trees. We good? That's, that's, that's the, uh, oh, you know, enjoy, no, no. Any other discussion?
I'll see to a juror.
Most of the jurors are expected, the files are all called.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Thank you, well done, we thank you so much for your important help.
Thank you.